Why don't we go ahead and get started if we can. There he is, Mr. Shields. Welcome to the Monday, July 7th meeting work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are glad that you are all here tonight and appreciate your attendance. Mr. Shields, are you ready for the first item?
We are. If I could just get one more chair up here. County Fire Chief Jim Schwartz and our Chief of our Falls Church Volunteers Paul Schomburg. And we are here to brief the council on what we believe is the good conclusion to the discussions we've been having now over two years over updating the city's fire services contract with Arlington County. And this is a tripartite agreement between the county, the city, and the Falls Church Volunteers, and it will update a 1989 agreement. And in fact, our relationship between these three parties goes back decades prior to 1989 in a very mutually beneficial way. In the staff report that I provided to the council, I touched on some of the highlights of the changes to the agreement. And I'd like to speak to those and then just have a chance for Jim and Paul to speak to the council and answer any questions that you might have. The request is to authorize me to execute this agreement at your meeting a week from tonight on July 14th. So a couple of the key changes that we've discussed in the past on the agreement. The Station 6, which is located just down the hill, is currently staffed by 33 career firefighters with a complement of 50 volunteers who also use the station and serve the community from that station. With the 33 career firefighters, under the current agreement, we're responsible for a split of only 30, but we actually have 33 serving there. So the updated agreement will reflect the actual staffing levels that are at the station today. In addition, the city will pick up some additional costs for overtime, a 50/50 split for overtime with a cap on overtime that's in the agreement. This will get us closer to what I think would be a 50/50 true split on personnel costs. I think Chief Schwartz would be able to make the case with numbers that in fact the county still does pay significantly more than 50 percent when you cover recruitment, physicals, the administration, the command staff, and all of the equipment that the firefighters carry. The other big change is the county will assume responsibility to manage and pay for routine maintenance at Fire Station 6, and the city will continue to be responsible for capital expenditures for the station. And so I think one of the big improvements with this agreement is that the county, which operates the station, will be in charge of the maintenance of the station on a routine day-to-day basis. And that has been something that the volunteers have done under the 1989 agreement, and Paul Schomburg has done essentially as a volunteer with assistance from other volunteers, and we've gotten great service from the volunteers. But in terms of taking care of, as that station gets older, I think there's a heavier lift on the routine maintenance that's required, and the county DES will now take that on. The capital expenditures will go through the capital planning process, and the city will be responsible for that financially, and the county then will carry out those financial improvements. The big ones that are in queue right now and which have been funded is the replacement of the bay doors, the HVAC system, and the windows, and that is the beginning of, I think, a number of capital refreshes that are needed down at the station. On the apparatus, the city will agree to join the county's master lease purchase program, which involves the replacement of all the apparatus, the engine and the ladder, on an eight-year basis, and the ambulance that is at the station will be replaced on a five-year basis. In the agreement, the volunteers will, through their fundraising capacity, cover the costs of the ambulance replacement unit, and the city, subject to council appropriation, will make sure that the volunteers stay with a reserve engine, which is necessary for the volunteers and is useful. So those are a couple of the key things that we want the council to be aware of in this agreement. I think the dialogue in updating this agreement has allowed us to really bring issues to the fore, address them, and to do so in a way that will serve us well, hopefully, for the next decade-plus. So let me stop there, ask either of our two chiefs if they'd like to add to what I've reported to council, and then answer questions that you have.
I really don't have too much to say, other than I'd certainly like to thank the city manager and the county fire chief for the collaboration that we've had here. This has been a detailed and at some times difficult discussion, and I think that we've all arrived at a place that we all can agree is mutual ground. So I'm very appreciative for their efforts, and I thank them for their time. And I would just add as a side comment, I'm not going to miss helping to maintain the fire station one bit. That is the worst part of a volunteer job that I could possibly dream of, so looking forward to Arlington helping out in that area.
Well, excuse me. Let me thank, pardon me, let me thank both the city manager and Paul for all their assistance in getting through this. I think, as the city manager acknowledges, we've been in a very longstanding relationship in terms of the sharing of resources, the sharing of services to the city. And of course, I like to remind people that we benefit as much from this relationship on the county side, given that literally 50 percent, almost exactly 50 percent of both the territory and the population served first due by that firehouse are shared by the city and the county. Its first due area is half in the county, and we derive obviously direct benefits from this relationship. I think one of the hallmarks of the, as both Paul and Wyatt have indicated, has been at times arduous, is that where in the past we have sort of, you know, let the agreement, I'll say, sort of slip as things got more complex, as we had to deal with challenging issues. What we've really, I think, built into this agreement is more detail and a structure that causes us to come together every year to ensure that we're both in the same place in terms of the agreement, that we're both satisfied the way that things are going, and then we can have some of those conversations about some of the planning for future needs with regard to the firehouse and for fire and EMS services to the city. So it has been a long process, but I think one in which the outputs are far greater than what we had, you know, going into it.
Thanks. Before I open it up to questions, I'd just like to thank all of you, and in particular, Chief Schwartz and Chief Schomburg, for all the good work you do for the city. The citizens of Falls Church greatly appreciate all your work. You may not see it on a day-to-day basis, but we're very delighted that you're able to work together in such a collaborative fashion and to provide such good service to our community. Are there any questions that folks have for any of the chiefs? Mr. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Well, thanks a lot. I know Chief Schwartz, that the relationship with Falls Church is a sort of unique one for the Arlington County Fire Department, and I appreciate your flexibility. I know it offers challenges, but it also offers opportunities, actually a model here that maybe is a good one that others even could learn from, once we get it right, and I think we have moved in that direction. So thank you for that. And the volunteers, of course, thank you. I know that you've had to reach out and have had to deal with a lot of issues, and I appreciate that. Chief Schomburg, from your perspective, from the standpoint of volunteers, is there enough here that you can continue to be a functional organization and contribute significantly to public safety?
That's a good question. The short answer to that question is yes, and there's really two components to that that were a big influence for us. First and foremost was the financial implications of what's in the agreement. There are some additional requirements that we are signing up for that are going to bring a larger cost footprint to our organization, but we believe that we've structured it in such a way that we can manage that sustainably in the long term. Additionally, we've secured our existing role as it is today and kind of put some better structure and language around exactly how that relationship works, particularly with how we interface with the county staff at the station. So I feel pretty good on both fronts, and, you know, one of the things I would also add is I think this has been a good exercise in terms of bringing all three parties together to generate more awareness of our own unique challenges, and I think ultimately our relationship is actually going to improve as a result of this exercise.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank staff and especially Cindy for the work that you put into this, because you represented the third part of this discussion. And it's hard to imagine a service more essential than this one. So getting this right is critically important to all of us, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, Mr. Brug?
Thank you. You mentioned, as far as territory and the number of citizens served and businesses, et cetera, that are served is roughly the same between the county and the city. How about as far as number of service calls and those types of metrics, as far as, and service costs may, or calls may not be the exact right number, but as far as cost to provide services?
You know, I apologize for not coming more prepared to talk about the actual incidents. We did look at the number of incidents and the distribution of those as we went through some of this work here, but I'm not recalling off the top of my head what those look like. I can certainly get those for you.
Do you have a rough idea of that?
We did look at those as part of our overall framework for this agreement and came away satisfied that 50/50 was the right split. One of the things that really confuses it is the importance of mutual aid. And so when you look at our call responses, a great deal of our call response comes from Fairfax County. And so, but if you take the whole body of responses that are in the city compared to the service territory for Station 6, it comes, I think, to a good 50/50 split as a working concept.
So it's fair to say that you guys were trying to come up with a 50/50 cost structure overall?
I think what we were looking at was a roughly, you know, equal split between costs within the way that we share the resources, personnel, apparatus, firehouse, that sort of thing. Because under, as the city manager alludes to, the automatic aid agreement in Northern Virginia, which has been in existence since 1975, and to Mr. Snyder's point, that's probably one of the more unique aspects of the relationship as it exists here. There is no cost sharing among the jurisdictions.
I guess what I'm driving at is, one approach could have been, you know, and this is something I think the citizens are going to ask, is why not just go 50/50, right down the middle on all the line items? Why take this a little bit more complicated and finessed approach?
Well, we certainly could do that. We found, I think our operating principle going into the agreement was that the city would continue to pay for half the personnel costs, as, you know, has been the relationship for decades. And then beyond that, the city would take up the responsibility for capital costs, and the county would take up the responsibility for the operating costs, given that we are the operators. So, you know, the cost of maintenance on the apparatus, the cost of fuel, the cost of training, the members, are all considered to be operating costs. And that's really where, if there are any differences at all, it's really, you know, it really breaks in that.
And that's sort of why I raised this issue, and I know that I've privately talked to Wyatt at least about it, and I may have talked to both of the chiefs about it. And that kind of gets to the crux of one of the concerns that I have, but I think can be mitigated. And I haven't seen the most recent language of the agreement, but it does come down to operating issues. And I know that the county, similar to the city and many localities, is strapped. And I just want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where we are deferring operating issues and maintenance, and that comes back.
All right. Without any further ado, the July 7th.
Sorry, I think that's upstairs. That, you know, we don't end up in a situation where we're not meeting what we need to on the operating and maintenance side, and all of a sudden we get huge upticks on the capital. And the capital is not going to be small items. The apparatus, et cetera, is exceedingly expensive. So I don't know how we manage that, but given the types of discussions that I know the city's been having on budgetary issues and budgetary pressures, and relying on the county to kind of cover those, and they may be facing similar challenges to the city's issues as well. So that's been a lingering concern with how this is constructed from the very beginning, and I've pointed this out a couple times. So I'd like to hear about how we're managing that in the agreement. And I know that, you know, we can use similar terms of, you know, reasonable, you know, I'm sure that there's standard language on maintenance, et cetera, but, you know, how are we going to manage that? Because I see that as a difficult issue, and I...
I think it's a fair point to raise. The agreement is pretty specific about what is considered capital and what is considered preventative or corrective maintenance. It actually spells out in fairly good detail which items the city is responsible for and which the county is responsible for. Now, we had some discussions, we had more than a few discussions, about just exactly what I think you're raising, which is if we keep up operating, or said the other way, if we fail to keep up operating, it could accelerate the capital, the capital cost. But that's where we feel that the annual meeting that is engineered into the agreement that will look at all of those issues will give rise to, you know, specifics that we can address as necessary.
Yeah, let me be a little bit more specific about it. What I'm concerned about is, you know, you can forego a couple of oil changes on your normal car, et cetera, and not do all the maintenance, not rotate the tires, and all of a sudden it becomes a huge problem for the apparatus. And I just want to make sure that there's something in the agreement that has conditions that whatever the standard maintenance on the apparatus and on the capital is being done, and if it's not being done, there is an exit for the city on those items. So it doesn't become a deferred maintenance issue, given the budget constraints that we're in. And I know that that's nobody's intent right now, but given sort of the climates that we're in with budgetary issues, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't end up falling into those traps. And again, and I say that in part because of other issues that we're facing in the city, so I'm a little, you know, I'll be honest, a little bit biased, given some things that we've had to do in difficult financial times that we're now paying for on the capital end, so.
I think those are really good points, and I would say one of the great improvements of this agreement is the way that it addresses exactly those concerns. And on the apparatus, by going to the eight-year replacement schedule, right now, we are, our apparatus are older than that, and that drives up the maintenance costs and increased risks, really, I think, for the fire suppression. I mean, there's a reason why there's value in moving to that eight-year replacement schedule. But we did that as part of this negotiation by having the county take over the maintenance expenses. They wanted to know that the city was not going to be handing them 20-year-old apparatus to maintain, because, so having the city join their master lease and purchase program really was critical for us to have the county take over the maintenance costs for the apparatus. I believe we will end up with better-maintained apparatus, newer apparatus than we currently have. On the station, with the city being responsible for maintenance, we just weren't set up for it very well. We have essentially two people that manage our 11 buildings, and the fire station, in addition to that, was a big burden for us. And so with the county, they have many stations they maintain, they have economies of scale. We believe that this will be an improvement in service as we capture those economies of scale.
And I appreciate all that, but what I'm looking for again in the agreement, and we can talk more about it, you know, on Monday perhaps, but I'd like to see something that, you know, essentially makes it clear that the onus is on the county to maintain, and if there is a failure to maintain, that there is some level of consequence that the city doesn't pick up deferred maintenance tabs on what could happen, you know, 10 years down the road on deferred maintenance issues. So that's what I'm specifically looking for, something that captures that notion.
Other questions?
I've got a question. Phil, do you have a question?
Could I?
Please.
Just three quick things, one on apparatus, one on station, and one on personnel. So Mr. Conde is here in the room, our CFO, and we've talked about, you know, financing these large expensive public safety costs, fleet reserve and so forth. I'm just wanting to understand that the process set in place by this agreement where the city will pay for the purchase of the, I believe it's the ladder truck, right, not the latter truck on the top of the last page, the ladder truck and the engine. Just want to make sure that that comports with some kind of planning process that we are putting in place on the budget and finance side, is...
Well, one thing I would just say is that by going with this agreement, it becomes an operating budget, it becomes an annual payment, as opposed to, you know, in year five, we're going to put out $800,000 for a new ladder truck. And so that is the reason why we have right now an 11-year-old ladder truck, is because that came due right in 2000, I think in '10, and that was not a time when we had $800,000.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that this agreement will force a discipline upon us to handle this as an annual activity rather than, oh, we'll worry about that, you know, when the sun shines, and when the thing breaks, it turns out it's raining and we're up a creek.
That's right.
Okay. If I could, sir, I would just add that we've been replacing our apparatus in the county in this manner now for almost 15 years. We have substantially reduced our operating costs, because we don't keep apparatus as long as 11 or 15 or 20 years, which is the typical standard. We actually enter into an agreement with a third-party reseller that gives us a guaranteed buyback price on the day that we buy the apparatus. That vendor sells in a secondary market and has remarked on a number of times that we have among the best apparatus programs anywhere in the country, and we get the added benefit of operating our fleet at a lower cost than we used to.
And when that sale is executed, the proceeds come back to the revolving fund, I assume.
Correct, exactly, exactly.
Okay, good. Okay. On the station itself, I've been around long enough to feel like it's still a new station. I mean, I know it isn't, but I do remember the old one, and taking my kids there, and my kids are not that old yet. So the building itself now is about 15, 16 years old, is that right?
2001.
Okay. As we undertake other major construction projects here, I'm just trying to get an understanding of, you know, the useful life of what sound like fairly significant components of a big building like this. Bay doors, windows, and HVAC, you know, most of the building is bay doors on one side at least. You all have been in and worked with this building every day since the day it was opened. Can you give us anything in the way of what you've learned about, I mean, can we get a little bit longer out of bay doors and HVACs and so forth than 12 or 13 years? It doesn't seem like very long to me for some of those big items.
Yeah, so I would say overall, one of the things that we're going to try and correct through the capital program is some of the, what I would call the value engineering that was put into the building when it was initially built. In other words, some decisions were made about how to shave some costs back in 2000 as the building was being designed and being built, for obvious reasons, and we're now paying the price for some of those. So those bay doors, while expensive, those windows, while expensive, are frankly not engineered as well as they could be to service the building. We're seeing HVAC problems in the building, because both the windows and the doors leak a significant amount of energy. So they are, they're in need of replacement, and we feel like making that replacement will lower some other operating costs in the long run.
Okay, that's very responsive. That's not what I hoped to hear, but that is in fact probably the truth. And actually, your reference to energy, to steal a little Dan Zee's thunder, seems like an opportunity to perhaps do some things that Dan Zee will talk about and I won't. Because my third question is about personnel. If you could just give a brief explanation, the rationale behind the staffing level increase is that the county has moved from three firefighters on a ladder truck to four, which spread over three shifts, results in an increase of three personnel. I think it might be helpful just to understand why that happened, and now that you have four, do you feel like that's going to be enough for a while, or is that a number that we should expect to see requests to increase?
In answer to the last part of your question, there will be no further increases. The 33 represents four-person staffing on the apparatus, as well as some relief factors. So when we have vacancies caused by leave, we usually have an extra person or two in each station that can fill those vacancies without us either detailing from another station personnel or using callback overtime. So that's a, there's a staffing factor that's built into our overall staffing. The national standard for apparatus staffing is a minimum of four persons on all apparatus. National Fire Protection Association Standard 1710 says that there should be no fewer than four on every suppression vehicle. We made the decision now, close to five years ago, to move four persons into the Falls Church, on each of the, the engine's always been staffed with four. We moved the fourth onto the ladder truck about five years ago, if memory serves me correctly. And that had to do with not only meeting that national standard, but also, quite frankly, the risk in this area of the county and the city.
Okay, fine, thank you. Thank you for your responses, and I join in those who've expressing their appreciation for your work. And I know staff has worked this issue very hard for a very long time. Mr. Brug's questions, you know, show how deeply we all care about this area and want it to work well, and managing our inter-jurisdictional expenses is just extremely important to the city's bottom line, and we need to give the citizens confidence that we are doing it well and carefully. And I appreciate that you all did engage in a lengthy process and ended up at a place that, as you said, you can work with. And I look forward to this annual snapshot of how things are going, so that if there do need to be tweaks and changes made, that we'll have, you know, an expectation that that's part of the dialogue going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief Schwartz and Schomburg and Wyatt and Cindy for arriving at an agreement that I think that you're all can live with and abide by, and we certainly understand that coming to this kind of agreement is not easy. You've been working on this a while, so I want to thank you for that and for all the service that you provide. Just to eliminate the points I believe were made, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but my presumption is that as we talk through this, that I'm glad there's clarity in our responsibility for capital improvements, but I might understand that we are looking at replacing three major vehicles in the next year or so. And if that's true, then there will be a net fiscal impact that I think the documents that would be presented to us, perhaps that's not quite ready yet. I look forward to seeing that document sometime soon, so we're able to evaluate the impact for ourselves, not so much in terms of saying yes or no, because public safety is, after all, one of the key items of our charter we're responsible for, so we'll do what we have to. Beyond that, I just want to come back to the point that council member Duncan mentioned, which is during the brief time I've been on this council, having heard now, we're now getting ready to replace the windows for the third or fourth time around, and it seems to me these windows aren't the last one in a couple of years. Maybe someone's eating them, I don't know. And bay doors and HVAC, it just seems to be a lot of work on that building on a constant basis, and so if this is indeed a partnership that corrects that situation, then I would expect that when we finally do go forward with the program, that it will be fixed to some degree of perpetuity, so we won't be back in three or four years and say, we need to replace the windows again. I'm looking forward to seeing what the net fiscal impact is of that documentation, so we understand full well what the effect is. So really, my only major question here is, as this partnership moves forward, and there are points to be considered and presented to council for funding and other kinds of consideration, what is the mechanism to... I'm looking forward to seeing what the net fiscal impact is of that documentation so we understand full well what the effect is. So really, my only major question here is, as this partnership moves forward and there are points to be considered and presented to council for funding and other kinds of consideration, what is the mechanism to come to an agreement on what's right under the agreement that's being proposed, and how will it be brought to us?
Meaning if there are disputes over the course of the agreement?
I think that is the question, sir.
We, we do call on the agreement that if there is a dispute, that we would first seek a third-party mediator to resolve the dispute, and so that's built into the agreement. The areas of dispute, you know, would be probably on, on funding items, possibly the, you know, capital improvements that the county believes are necessary and the city might wish to do at a later date, and, and I think we should be able to work through those. And the agreement also calls for, if there are major capital, such as the replacement of the entire station, that that would be something that the county and the city would, would plan on together. In the history, the county did have a financial role in building the station, and they contributed financially to that, and so we would use that precedent as something that we think would be appropriate for the future. In terms of the net fiscal impact, I wanted to make sure that we're all in agreement with the numbers before we published anything. The, in sort of round numbers, the, the total cost to operate the station on an operating basis is about $5.1 million. That changes from year to year, but $5.1 million is, is a way we've tallied it up, and of that, 2.7 is being covered by the county and 2.4 is being covered by the city. Because there are embedded costs, the county still has traditionally carried and will continue to do so. But with that increase of 2.4 million on the city's side, that is an increase over what we have paid in the past, and it's about a 5% increase. And the city council did a budget amendment a month ago that will help cover that, and so we were covered in, in the current fiscal year. But I think in working through all these details, we have an agreement that it will better address the equities.
Thank you. I think that's a reasonable answer, and I would certainly hope that as this process moves forward, this agreement is fully implemented, if there are any big bubbles coming along here, that you involve the city council sooner rather than later.
If I may, I'd also like to clarify one point for the record, that the, the windows, the bay doors, and all the mechanical systems for the building are original. What I think you're referring to was, last year, we had put forward CIP packages for all three of those systems, and so this is a recurring theme that you're hearing, but that work hadn't taken place yet because this agreement was still in negotiation. It wasn't clear whether the city was going to have full responsibility for CIP and just how those were going to be delegated. So it's kind of been on hold for now, but we're ready to move forward.
Great, I've got a few questions, and let's wrap it up and move on to the next item. But quickly, what is the duration of this agreement?
It's an annual agreement.
But we have no, it's just one year and rolls over to the next year, or is it for a set term other than a year?
No, it's, it's laid out for one year. Either party can walk away from it with what we say is a 12-month notice, just so that, you know, whatever would have to be done to back out can be done. But it's essentially a recurring agreement with a review every year.
Okay. And who controls overtime? I know overtime can be a significant expense. Who makes those decisions to allocate, you know, hey, I want to pull these people in for overtime versus hiring a new person?
Yeah, we have specific policies that govern overtime because I'm managing it, you know, on the county side as, you know, the exact same level of scrutiny that I will for the, the city station. So typically what happens is that we have, system-wide, we have minimum staffing of 73 personnel. There are 95 personnel assigned to each shift in order to assure that we can meet that 73 with vacation, sick leave, light duty, disability leaves, those sorts of things. The first thing that is done whenever we are below minimum is that we move personnel, if they're available, from one station to another, and only if we fall below that number of 73 system-wide do we go to overtime. The agreement calls for us only to account for overtime at the city's expense when it is the vacancy at the firehouse, at the, at the Falls Church Firehouse. You're not paying anything else anywhere in the system. So whenever we can move a person to cover a vacancy at number six, that'll be done. When we can't, it would be caused for overtime.
I see, and so if someone were moved from six to somewhere else to cover some other vacancy somewhere else, would that be overtime the city would be responsible partially for as well?
That wouldn't be, okay, so if it's a person assigned to number six working a different shift on overtime, no, the city would not be. You're only responsible for the overtime at Fire Station Six.
And that would be, would also include someone who's moved from Station Six to a county facility, another county facility to cover a vacancy somewhere else, for example, on Station Five, wherever that may happen to be?
So if a, if a person from Station Six is detailed temporarily for typically a shift to Station Five to cover a vacancy there, there's no cost impact to the city.
Okay. And then it seems like the management of this facility falls squarely in Arlington County's earals.
Correct.
Does the city have any management role or really practically none?
Well, no, there's a significant role in terms of the city because that, that annual meeting that we were talking about is when we will do a review of what the state of the station is essentially. You know, what do the operating costs look like? To the, to the earlier point, if we see operating costs, you know, accelerating and we think that there may need to be another expenditure made in order to, you know, better manage those costs, those are the topics that will be taken up at that annual meeting.
And is there any updates before that? In other words, it's just sort of once a year we find out that maybe our expenses are significantly higher? Do we have, you know, quarterly, monthly, some sort of other regular updates so that we can project our own cost?
Well, just to be clear, the operating costs are all on the county, okay? Anything that is of preventative or corrective nature comes out of the county's budget, and county staff, our Department of Environmental Services, where our Facilities Bureau is located, will be responsible for executing all of that. There's no cost to the city for that. Where there are implications on the overall operation would be if some operating costs is, you know, is accelerating, and we think the reason for that, you know, has to do with the capital costs that we might need to look at more closely and perhaps invest in, you know, on a different schedule, and that would be the topic of discussion at that annual meeting.
Okay, or overtime that may run more than anticipated as well?
Well, yes, but again, we put a cap in the agreement for overtime. So, so, you know, if I mismanage, you know, my personnel, you know, my hiring, my recruitment of new personnel, and that has an impact on overtime, you're only responsible for a cap of 70% of, 7%, I'm sorry, of, of personnel cost going to overtime.
Okay, that's all I've got. I think we probably should move on, but again, we thank you both and city staff for all the hard work you've done. We really appreciate it. Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you, Council.
And Council, we would ask if, if you are okay with this, that we move stormwater up ahead of transportation. We think the stormwater item is going to be very short.
Sure.
And we do have a guest who is here, David Bulova, who is here just to answer any questions about these state-mandated changes to the stormwater ordinances that you adopted two months ago, again, under the state mandate. But Mike Collins, maybe if you both want to just come up? In a nutshell, the council adopted new stormwater regulations that govern private development in the city pursuant to state requirements, and the council finished that work about two months ago. This has nothing to do with the utility fee, the stormwater utility, or those types of things. This is the city's traditional municipal regulatory function that is, that we do to carry out state policy effectively. The General Assembly did make changes to that, to those laws this year, and we need to reflect those in our own local ordinances. And the main purpose of tonight's, tonight's briefing is just to let the council know that this is coming. We think they're mostly technical in nature, and there are one or two issues that still need to be resolved, but when we get those resolved, we'd like to bring those to council for first reading. Did I say?
Yeah, that's correct. There's actually one remaining. There's actually one remaining issue at this point. We got clarification on one of two outstanding issues this morning, actually went the other way than what we had expected, so at this point, we're going to wait till we get clarification on the final one to bring it forward to first reading and second reading. All of these issues are really minor, of low, of low implication on, on how the ordinance will work, but we need to get it right, and we're waiting on DEQ to rule on the final issue.
Great, okay, well, unless there are any questions, why don't we, it looks like maybe there are a few quick questions. Mr. Z.
Yes, thank you. I do have questions, and maybe now is not the time to do this because clearly you're not really versed on what all the implications are, but since the law did change, I don't think it's enough for us to just hear that the implications and how we implement the law would be minor. I think we'd like a little bit more detail on this because we have spent quite a lot of time on this, so I don't know whether, who's prepared to address those. I don't need a long dissertation, but I would like to know what the changes are.
We could, we can summarize the changes.
Mayor, I can certainly go, go into a little bit more detail.
Yes, absolutely.
As you know, you adopted the ordinance in March. At the same time, we knew that there were a couple of moving parts that were out there. The first one was that we had submitted the draft ordinance to DEQ in January. They had promised they were actually going to turn comments around within 60 days. We actually only got comments back on May 6th, so they were running a little bit late. I don't blame them, they're short-staffed as well, but it would have been nice to have had some of these comments earlier on. The other part, and this was completely out of our control, is that the General Assembly made some changes to the, the state law, and of course, we didn't know how those were ultimately going to impact the city's program and the, I guess ultimately, it does require some changes. Primarily, however, they are changes that make it easier for a property owner to navigate the system. And so there are a good number of changes, you'll notice, to the definitions. Those by and large are simply updates or areas where the state wanted us to include a definition where we had originally thought we didn't need it, but rather than argue with them, we simply added those things in there. There are some code change updates. I, I think the three that really are meaningful, that I think property owners will care about, one came out of the General Assembly change, and that was for properties where the land disturbing activity is between one acre and five acres, and it's, if it's a single-family residential property, they don't need to pay the registration fee to the state. And so you all still get your $208 for it, but the state gets zero, and the property owner doesn't have to submit a registration statement. Another one, and this, I think it's a positive step in the right direction, is that for those same small properties, they don't have to submit a full stormwater management plan that the city can actually, actually it's the city's discretion, enter into an agreement in lieu of a stormwater management plan that kind of lays out, here's what you got to do, similar to what the city already does with its erosion and sediment control plan. And then last but not least, there was a change just clarifying that if you have a property that's developed as part of a larger neighborhood, that if there's additional development on that property, that they don't have to put together a whole new stormwater management plan from scratch. It recognizes that, that larger neighborhood stormwater management plan is, is what will dictate future development on that piece of property. And so again, it streamlines and clarifies the process. The two outstanding issues that we had, the first one was that the city wanted to extend that agreement in lieu of a plan to water quality impact assessments for resource protection areas. And so in the same way that it makes sense for these small properties, that you just say, hey, you can do this at an RPA, but you just have to abide by these particular terms, we thought that that made sense doing that, you know, not only for stormwater management and ENS, but also for WQIA, and sometimes with a site plan, again, being at the city's discretion. While DEQ didn't say that was a bad idea, they did come back and say that that wasn't permitted under the, the state law, or at least they didn't interpret it to be permitted under state law. And so that's just going to go back to what the original state definition is. I'll tell you that we do think we have a workaround for that. We had worked with the City of Alexandria on a similar issue in 2004, and so I think we can get where the city wants to go without that language in, in the ordinance. The, the second issue that's still outstanding that DEQ has said that they're going to get back to us, hopefully this week at the very latest, is dealing with common plan of development. And so common plan of development is essentially saying that if you've got a, a neighborhood, you treat it as a neighborhood and not individual lots. Well, in the city, what city staff had had a problem with is that you have very small projects on single-family lots or even commercially that over time add up to more than the threshold for which you should be regulated under these requirements. And so they might do a, an addition one year, they might do an addition in the next year, they might do another addition the next year and the next year. Neither, none of those would have to separately get a permit, but cumulatively, they actually wind up creating a lot of impervious cover. And so the city simply wanted to clarify that if you had more of these or had enough of these in a three-year, three-year period that resulted in more than 2,500 square feet of impervious cover or land disturbance, that that was a common plan of development and you actually had to meet the city's requirements. DEQ is still looking into that to decide whether that's simply a clarification or not. And so again, the fix is very easy, you know, once we figure out where DEQ is coming from in terms of the ordinance language, but that's kind of the last outstanding issue.
Thank you, I just have, that is a very good explanation. Just really have one remaining question. It may not have been addressed at all at any of this, which is that if you are an individual property owner and you're at a lower point than your surrounding neighborhood, and of course, your surrounding neighbor, and of course, that means you're probably taking a lot of the surcharge from the storm runoff onto your yard, are there any provisions to address how you can remedy that?
Certainly, and, and I think the whole, the whole purpose of where the state is going is to integrate both quality and quantity control. The more that you generate on the site, you know, not only are you causing flooding issues, but you're also going to be creating downstream water quality problems. And so the new technical criteria that you're implementing, really try to marry that up and get upstream property owners to infiltrate as much of that volume into the ground as, as possible. And so, you know, the ordinance not only technically, you know, makes sure that you mitigate water quality and quantity issues, but it also does increase the plan review requirements to account for those downstream properties so that they're adequately protected.
Any other questions? Mr. Duncan?
So there's a degree of anxiety in the community about the implementation of this new plan. Big shock. It's a new thing, charging people money, you read about it in the papers, you know...
This is just regulation of new development, does not have anything to do with the fee? No, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure we're not talking about the utility fee. Or at any rate, this ordinance does not have to do with the utility fee.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I will say that one, one of the state mandated parts of this is, you know, that the city is now administering the state construction management program. And so along with that, the state has already, always had a fee structure for abiding by that. And so if you want a state permit to conduct a land disturbing activity, in the old days, pre-July 1, 2014, you would have paid that fee to the state. Now, it's the city's responsibility to accept that fee, and then you all keep a portion and then give 28% of it to the state for, for oversight. But that's something that's, that's locked in by, by regulation. You have the authority to ask for more, but right now, the, the city is asking for the bare minimum that's allowed by regulation. So there is a, a, a fee structure that the state says you have to impose if you all decide that it's not bringing in enough revenue to make your program revenue neutral. You can go back to the state board and say, we want to, we want to change it, but right now, it just mirrors what the state minimum requirement standards are.
And that fee is only on construction, so that'd be a permit fee?
Correct.
Okay, I'll just hold. Any further questions? The line 90 where it says fiscal impact, the amendments will not have an additional fiscal impact on city. Added flexibility for property owners may reduce the cost of compliance for some regulated activities. Could you just give me an example of what that means?
Certainly. There's two areas. Number one is that for single-family residential properties between one and five acres, the cost of that permit fee goes down because that, they no longer have to pay the state portion, they just pay for the local portion. The other part that should save property owners some money, again, for small projects, is that agreement in lieu of a stormwater management plan. And so a full-blown stormwater management plan for a relatively small project can come at, at a, at a cost. And what this does is allow the city to enter into a contract with a property the city to enter into a contract with the property owner that says you don't have to go through the full plan, you just have to go ahead and do X, Y, and Z. And that should streamline the process and I think, you know, keep a property owner from having to go through unnecessary steps when each side knows what needs to be done to protect water quality and quantity.
And once that stormwater management plan is agreed upon, implemented, does that then have any impact on the annual stormwater fees that are paid by that property?
No, sir. That shouldn't have any impact on the stormwater utility, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, you could get a credit for the BMPs that you put in.
Yes, correct. If you put in a structural BMP, that would qualify.
I think that's where I was trying to go at the very beginning. Is this in any way making it easier or less costly for BMPs to be implemented at the front end so that the annual costs are somewhat mitigated?
And I would say, I don't know that it reduces the cost of the actual BMPs themselves, although as you said, the BMPs themselves would be eligible for credit, but it does reduce the upfront planning costs. So it's more of a one-time cost reduction, and then whatever you put in structurally will be a long-term cost reduction.
I understand. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, well, unless there are any other questions, thank you both for coming out this evening. We appreciate your time. And why don't we move on to the next item? Mr. Shields?
We'll be joined by Paul Stoddard, our senior planner and the planning department. We have four items that we wanted to discuss with the council tonight. The first is a status report on the neighborhood traffic calming program and to undertake an effort to make changes to that program. Items B and C are requests for council action at your meeting next week. And then item D is a briefing on an important question that we raised with the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority about the 30% funding that the city is eligible for. And so we wanted to make sure the council had all the same information that we have on that, answer any questions about that as we proceed with capital projects in the transportation area. So Paul Stoddard will lead our briefing on these items. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So the first item, originally labeled 2A, an update on the neighborhood traffic calming NTC program. So what we've seen over the last several years in the city is the city adopted an updated NTC program in 2011. In 2012, there were no requests that came in under that program. In 2013 and 2014, we saw something of a flood come in. And what we've seen is that the city is not able to keep up with that volume of requests under the existing NTC program, in part because of the way the program is laid out, but more so because of the annual dedication of funding and staffing that's made available to operate the program. So recognizing that this creates frustration for a lot of parties, for the citizens certainly, who aren't sure what to expect as they go through the program, but also for the CACT that's charged with administering the program and for staff as well. The CACT is leading a charge to update the NTC program. And so this is an opportunity for me to let you know where the CACT is in that process, and also get some feedback from council in terms of what direction you all would like to see the update go. In terms of public engagement, we've stood up a webpage where everyone can see what's going on with the update. The web address is here in the memo. And on that webpage is listed the living document that I'm trying to keep updated as the CACT gets to various key briefings and decision points along the process. Eventually, if the program were to be updated, that would be done by resolution by the council. That's the same way the existing program was approved. And what I really want to have a discussion with tonight is sort of what's the appropriate scale for this program to run, for this program to run at. And right now, the program is operating with $15,000 annually in operating expenses. That covers the preliminary engineering and planning phases for about one and a half cases. In 2013 alone, we had applications for four cases. So right off the bat, we didn't have enough funding to take them all through. The Parker Kent case, which was recently given capital funding by budget amendment, that's expected to cost about $100,000, which is significantly more than the $15,000 annually. And so the discussion tonight ought to be sort of what number of cases does the city want to be able to handle? What level of intervention should the city be aiming for? Certainly, there are things that are much more expensive than $100,000 per case. There are things that are less expensive than $100,000 per case. And I think it's always gonna vary based on the request that's coming in from the neighborhood and the severity of the program. But getting a sense early on of sort of what's the right level to spend on traffic calming in the city would be helpful in reframing the program.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we open it up to questions?
Mayor, could I just add one comment? I think as Mr. Stoddard mentioned, in terms of resources, that's the funding for the actual project, planning, engineering, design, and construction, also the staff resources to implement. And as a reminder, council just approved two new transportation CIP-funded staff, one of which is engineering, and that is to work on already approved CIP projects and the bigger projects primarily in the commercial corridor. So part of this discussion also has to be on the prioritization of projects and where staff focus and resources are to match council's vision and strategic planning.
Thank you. We have comments, questions? Mr. Z?
Just thank you, Mayor. So on page two of item 2A, there's a section here captioned "Council Concurrences and Discussions." So if I can be so bold as to summarize what you're looking for tonight, is a sense of how important council views the traffic calming program, the NTC as you call it, I'll call it the same, and the other pieces that CACT believes that $40,000 per year authority, if not actual money in hand, is what's necessary to keep it going. So my first question is, is this all bundled together with new hires and people and everything else? Can you break it down in terms of staff requirements, how or if these are being met or not met? I know there's a replacement due currently because Kristen, is her name Kristen?
Kristen, yeah.
Has left? So you're under staff right now, and you don't look that tired, but you probably ought to look a little bit more tired. So how much of this is actually necessary for capital, for capital project implementation, which is if you are at full running speed and you're able to address what is really desired by the community, not so much maybe what you desire, but if there are 12 requests, and there are 12 legitimate requests, and they've been paying fire for a while, then I would imagine that we, as council, would want to have some illumination on how well we're doing those things. So the first question is how much money is really necessary for staff and then for capital projects? The second one, I think, is just to the heart of why you're here tonight, which is what is our sense, our policy sense on how we should be treating these? Is it really limited by staff resources, monetary resources, or is it, do we need to address the problems at hand? I'm mindful of what happened earlier when there was $100,000 necessary to address the situation of Parker and Trent, where the Budget and Finance Committee recommended we reprogram, so giving you both authority and appropriations to get that done expediently. And so that's the, a question there is, at that point in time, there was screaming and crying from the neighborhood. So is there something like that going on now that we should be aware of? Question goes to, do we need to actually move forward and place authority for expenditures of funding and monies now, or is this something we can take up at budget time? It's actually three questions, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, those are, how many applications do we have right now pending?
So right now, we have one working its way through the process. That's the Pennsylvania Avenue case. There was another one that we had recently, the CACT recently dismissed. That was for West Cameron Road. And then there's another one that was recently dismissed as well, and that was for Whittier Park. So right now, we're working on one active case.
One additional, we didn't have one case that's been accepted by the CIT that you referenced in terms of funding, and we're designing that one. So there's two active.
I think one of the, I mean, historically, we've had a neighborhood traffic calming program that has not produced projects. And what it has produced is very often, you know, through, the way the process works right now is the neighbors need to collect signatures. This is one test. You need a 75% support. And then the other test is you put down the hoses and determine if there's actually a speeding problem. And generally, through those two criteria, most projects get kicked out. Either there is not a documented speeding problem, or there isn't neighborhood support to make changes to the street. But that's frustrating for everybody. It's frustrating for the neighbors who get close very often. Very often, they get a plurality of the neighbors who want something done, but they don't get across the 75% threshold, or the options for traffic calming end up, you know, once they get fleshed out, they become controversial. I can't recall there ever being an uncontroversial neighborhood traffic calming program. And so one of the main things we want to try to do is figure out a way, if there's a template of, you know, here's the menu of things that we would, that we would propose for the street, and partly as a way to control costs, so there's not a sort of an endless negotiation about what we'd actually do there. To have a fairly short menu, here's what we would recommend, and then determine if there's support for those. And if there isn't, then move on, you know, quickly to the next application. And also to have pretty clear and pretty strict criteria on whether we determine there's a speeding problem or not. And through that, you'll have a competitive process that we think that probably one or two projects a year would be the maximum that would probably meet those tests. And then if we had resources, we could actually execute from the menu of options. And after a number of years have passed, you know, 10 years have passed, we will be able to look back through our residential streets and say, we've made some design changes that caused traffic to operate, to behave itself appropriately in a residential context. That's the goal of the program. We haven't really been able to implement it over the 15 years we've had this program to do that.
Well, I can certainly hear your frustration. If I could just follow up quickly. So if we're talking about one and a half projects a year, so would that be on the order of $75, $100,000, just for the capital part, and you've got staff already covered, or am I hearing another number here? And then the second one is, is the one and a half projects limited by the amount of applications that could go through the process, or is it just a natural, natural way of things?
So there are a couple pieces going on. So the $400,000 figure that the CACT uses, that comes from the 2013 and anticipated 2014 workload, with the idea of wanting to push about three projects through the pipeline at a time. Certainly, if we reduce that down to trying to get one or two projects through the pipeline, then that $400,000 figure comes down. In addition to the capital, the staffing costs are much higher for neighborhood projects than they are for commercial projects. And I'll actually let Mike speak to this a little bit with his experience in Arlington County. And also, in terms of how many projects you would push through the pipeline, we know in the city that there are lots of needs. That's why every time the budget cycle comes around, there's an issue of how much do we want to spend versus how much do we want to tax, because there are a lot of needs, and it's a question of how big are your priorities on these different things. A lot of streets in the city are very safe. There are some streets that are not as safe as others, and the question is sort of how much do you want to commit in terms of your staffing time and your capital cost to getting from that level of pretty safe to very safe or extremely safe on all those city streets. And if I could, I'll turn it over to Mike about costs.
So with regards to costs, there's a couple things going on. One is just the size and scope of the project. Projects can reasonably range anywhere from $20,000 or even less, $15,000, to several hundred thousand dollars, depending on what the solutions are and what the desire of the community is. So that obviously has, you know, your several orders of magnitude within your reasonable costs in terms of capital cost. With regards to the staffing, you can't do much of anything on one of these projects for less than $5,000 to $10,000 in staff cost. And that can quickly balloon to the $50,000, $60,000 range, based on the interaction that you have with the community, the number of iterations that you go through. And that's where the real struggle in these projects, and the real danger from a fiscal standpoint comes in, is that as you continue to negotiate and go back and forth with the community, and it's virtually impossible to reach a full consensus on any one of these projects. People are very passionate about the street they live on and what they want to see there, and what their perceptions of the safety are, and what their perceptions of the solution are. And so as you get into this repetitive cycle of negotiate, try this, try that, pay to have a design done, the costs just balloon. And it's not uncommon to have a project on one of these streets where the staff and engineering costs far exceed the capital cost. So cost is a very, is a highly variable issue, depending on how the program is structured and how it's run, and what the commitment is from leadership to really control and manage the program.
Mr. Burke, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a couple points of clarification. Why, does my memory still correct that there are exit valves even with the program, that ultimately the city manager has the authority to implement traffic calming measures?
Yeah, the program is advisory to the city manager. The city manager has authority under the charter to make changes to streets, put up signage and things like that. This program is meant to be through the CACT to advise the city manager so that
So this is sort of the
Manage the public aspect of it.
I just kind of want to, you know, get to the bottom up of some of this and some of the frustration. I hope that what is not happening is that we're not putting folks into a spin cycle by saying you have to go through this process when the city apparatus has the authority to put into place traffic and public safety measures, that we're meeting those responsibilities. And I understand that these measures can oftentimes be very divisive, and there may be a reluctance not to go there because it sort of raises a lot of tensions in the community. But I hope that when we have traffic safety concerns, that we are, one, trying to address those concerns. And dare I say, this is one of those issues which, which I think trying to get the consensus can be problematic at times, that we have to be leaders and try to address those public safety concerns. And there may be people who are happy or unhappy with those, but I think the driving factor, at least from my standpoint, needs to be addressing public safety. And if folks are not happy with the ultimate decisions, I think we as leaders need to deal with that. Rather than sort of getting into what Mike described, this back and forth perpetual issue, and then we have public safety issues that happen. So that's the first point I want to make, just globally, and I'm not, this is not to cast any, this is just me laying out sort of what my views are about that, and why it's certainly, you know, speaking as one council member, if you need to make difficult decisions, I mean, certainly brief council so we can also help with the messaging with that, so it's not all on you to address sort of the public issues that are gonna come up. So that's point one. Point two is we are starting to see a lot of development interest in the city. We already know one project that's gonna be possibly coming forward that raises a lot of traffic issues, an application that's not before council yet and hasn't come to work session, where we know that that's an issue. And, you know, despite what the local paper said about some comments that I had made earlier about the broad and Virginia, no, not Virginia Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue light, we need to just make sure that when we are seeing new development and there are gonna be traffic issues that we know are gonna be forthcoming, that it's built into the program, that those traffic mitigation measures get put into place, given that there are gonna be traffic impact issues. You know, and I know that You know, and I know that the E D C is going to be taking up standard proffer agreements, et cetera, and certainly, traffic is going to have to be part of those. Those are sort of non-negotiables, again, as one council member. You know, some of the discussion we've had in the past as well, the tax, you know, revenue generated by blah, 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 blah project should, you know, take care of the traffic, and then ultimately, it gets eaten up by something else and traffic, et cetera, sort of takes the backseat. That's sort of not where my head's at, given what we've seen before and how long it's taken to do projects. So I think traffic mitigation measures have to be built in to how we're handling the proffers up front, and hopefully, we'll get away from these being negotiated. But if there's major traffic impacts that are going to be happening with some of the prof, with some of the projects that get handled straight out. So I think that's something, you know, as you all were looking at the various traffic measures, that you work with planning staff, and I know Paul obviously is a part of planning staff, as we're looking at the voluntary concessions that get fed into that, so they're not voluntary, but part of the standard package that has to come forward. Because otherwise, it's, they just take years to get done, and prices change, and who knows who is responsible for doing what? And by the way, we've had, you know, two major accidents, because the signal is potentially not in place that could have helped mitigate some of that.
Well, one thing I did want to, just on your first point, I think one thing that is, just want to be very clear about is that if there's an unsafe situation, we will address it. The Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program is discretionary. It's something that, there's a street that meets all of the design standards, but the residents aren't happy with it. And so that's really what this program is designed to address. If there's, if there's a safety problem that does, because, you know, where it doesn't meet the standards, design standards, then we will fix that.
Yeah, the, I think your question really perfectly illustrates some of the challenges that we have here, is that many people perceive an unsafe situation, but the data is there to show that it's not an unsafe situation. Or perhaps better stated, safety really is a continuum. There are, there are ways we can engineer streets to be perfectly safe. They would be exorbitantly costly. I think all of the streets within the city, I'm not aware of any, what I would consider from an engineering standpoint, any safety issues. That doesn't mean that everybody's happy with their street. So it really does become a quality of life issue for people. They perceive streets as unsafe or undesirable, and certainly, these projects do increase, in my opinion, increase the quality of life. But I don't know that they take an unsafe street and make them stay safe. They take very safe streets and make them even better, and provide better opportunities for pedestrianism and bicyclists and other modes of travel. But it's a continuum.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Duncan, do you have?
Because, thank you. Because of what you just said, I think you're absolutely correct. You know, I remember back when I first served on a transportation committee in the mid-'80s, you know, we would get complaints, we would run the data, the data did not warrant any action, really. And yet, people were unhappy. So if what you're asking us, I'm trying to figure out what you're asking us to do tonight with this. If, if, if one thing you're asking is, is from a policy perspective, the time that we spend on this issue, you know, the backup that we're willing to give staff, the manager and other staff on it, when you do have a recommendation that you feel is, you know, the right recommendation, maybe it's not to do anything, or maybe it's to do less than what some people would want. If you're asking, you know, would council, would this council member at least back you up on that? I think yes. I mean, the three areas that I hear the most about, people are concerned about are taxes, traffic, and, you know, school facilities. So this, to me, is one of the big three. So all the effort that we spend on it is worthwhile, I think. Following on what Mr. Burke said about, you know, the resources question, my, I guess, question back to you is, can we align our work on neighborhood traffic calming at every opportunity that we get with developments going on? And right now, I'm thinking, of course, about Broad and West. Dysfunctional situation right now has been dysfunctional ever since I moved here in 1985. There are already signs up back then, trying to deal with the situation. Can we improve that? Sure, we can definitely improve it. Can we afford to spend a half million dollars to improve it? Well, probably not. But can we align what we know we would want to do with a possible development interest there to take advantage of resources that we otherwise don't have? I mean, basically, it seemed to me like when we passed the budget amendment for the Kent and Parker project, we essentially were funding a neighborhood traffic control project, right? I mean, we did, as Mr. Zee said, you know, authorize and appropriate it all at the same time, and that's not necessarily the preferred way to go about it. I mean, it would be preferred to have sort of a figure. You tell us what the figure is. I do, would want to understand more about, you know, staff as opposed to engineering and, and the actual work, because some of that staff is obviously not just dedicated to neighborhood traffic calming, so I'm not sure how you account for that in the budget. But, you know, let's try, as we work on the next budget, to come up with a line item for neighborhood traffic calming and, and tell people, you know, we cannot tell people, you know, there's a problem, or they perceive there's a problem, we can't do anything about that, we don't have the money. That's just not an acceptable response. Maybe we don't have enough money, maybe it's going to take a little longer than we thought, but we must be able to say that we have committed as a policy for, you know, the budget to show an effort on neighborhood traffic control. All the better if it's in conjunction, I think, with public-private partnership efforts where we can get them. On the Parker and Kent thing, just because we did move on that, we met before this meeting in an open session and discussed that specifically. And as I indicated there, I would hope that we might move more quickly than the timetable indicates, if not with the fully realized final project, at least something that would indicate the outlines of what that project's going to look like. It's essentially a school-child safety situation, so it's highly connected to the school year. And I think your current plan calls for it not really to get underway until spring of next year, which means it wouldn't get finished until the, after the next school year, probably, which, to me, just seems too long to say we're going to have nothing on the street for another whole school year. Because there was an accident there, it was one of those cases where, you know, we were moved to act because of an incident. So that's a specific response. But broadly, thanks to the Transportation Committee, I think they're the hardest, and we have a lot of hard-working boards and commissions, but they, they have a really hard job, Paul and Mike, everybody is working this, and I think it's an important area for you all to work for the reasons I stated earlier.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Zee? And then we'll wrap up. I've got a question or two.
Yes, I, uh...
Ms. Oliver. Her first? No, you go ahead.
So, so while I, my, my adrenaline is pumping here, I'm extremely disappointed to learn that having the council undertake emergency measures to appropriate and authorize expenditure funds to rectify the problem in Parker and Trent, that you're not planning to do anything until next year. And so, before you defend that action, I need you to go back, and the next time we talk about this, I need you to say that we have this underway and give us a better timetable. That's unsatisfactory, clearly unsatisfactory. And so you come before us and say, well, you know, unless you approve more resources, we've said here, the sense of council is you can have the resources that you want, but you're only going to hear a limited number of cases, and, you know, your answer to people that come before you will be, well, the council didn't really authorize to hear you. That cannot be the answer. You've got this very well-thought-out paper, and you're asking for a sense of commitment. I think you've got it. But with regard to what we appropriated under emergency situations, you just really need to move out on this. This needs to be a city that can and cannot, instead of cannot. I cannot say that more clearly.
Do you have any, if you...
For this to be a city that can, it's got to be a city of priorities. And our priorities have been the commercial districts. These are big, complex projects that we're trying to move forward with very complicated funding streams, et cetera, and they're hard. But the South Washington Street Commercial District, which will transform that, that street, is where, that's what we're staffed for, and we're understaffed for it, but we're trying to make it happen. And so that's really the, sort of the crux of the matter. While we're trying to do that, and that's new, because we have new money, we have new resources to be able to do that, that's what's really crowded out the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. We used to actually have very few transportation projects that we managed, so we were able to put staff on the N T C. So what I think, in terms of steps, we will get back with the council on the, on the Kent and Parker, which I've accused myself of, but there was a discussion about that earlier. So we'll, we'll get more information out on that. We will work forward on the program itself, and we will bring a package to council on, you know, if, with a scope of work for the program, and here's what you, if this is going to be successful, this is what it's got to have in terms of, of resources. Because to do these well, the citizens need somebody who they can pick up the phone and call and work the project. And right now, we've got a tenth of a person working this program. And so it's just, it's maddening for everybody. And that's, and that's, that's the crux of the problem.
All right, Ms. Oliver?
So, we have a situation where we know that the majority of council is, has a vision that has this as being a very walkable city, very, you know, alternative transportation, very people-friendly city. And obviously, we have a lot of work to do on our main commercial corridors, but we know that there will be a ripple effect out into the neighborhoods. And we also know that things that our neighbors are doing in Tysons, in Seven Corners, down the road in Arlington, we know things they're doing are going to have a ripple effect on our neighborhood. Now, I've heard tonight for the first time that it doesn't only have to be the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program that addresses this stuff, but I'm not sure that that perception exists. And I do feel that to some extent, this program has been a parking place for things that we just don't have the resources to move forward on, and maybe they are lower priority. But I wonder if rather than updating the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, we need an overview about what are the mechanisms by which we prioritize the residential areas, the non-commercial areas? How do we deal with the questions about the, the streets that don't fall into the neighborhood street category or the commercial corridor category? We have this, we have a number of streets that fall in there. So maybe, I guess I'm starting to feel like this is too narrow of an approach to what we need to do, because I'd like to see a broader approach that says, we have ripple effects. Our top priorities are certainly our commercial areas in terms of the development that we have going on, but things are going to spread out from that. And right now, what I see is the frustration of not having the staff to shepherd something through the process. The committee itself is getting frustrated and discouraged by the slowness by which they can act, and the pressure that's on them, and the fact that they then don't have time to deal with other transportation policy issues. And this isn't going to get any easier, and so, I mean, there's some good material here, but I think we need to take a slightly broader look about how these things fit together, because this is going to be one of the, the critical issues for the city in the next five to 10 years. And that's my soapbox, sorry.
Thank you. I've got a few questions and comments as well. So how many total projects do you anticipate there are? I mean, is it staff's position that they're really, in some ways, they're all discretionary? Are there, you know, there's 10 projects you think you see, 15, 20, two? What's your idea of what's out there?
Specific to residential streets?
Yes.
Oh, there's, there's, again, it's so discretionary, but there, I can walk down any street and look at it and go, I'd love to do this, I'd love to put enough there, I'd love to narrow this, I'd love to get a wider sidewalk, put a sidewalk on that side of the street. Virtually any street in the city, you can walk down and look at and say, it could be better. Now, there are constraints on many of them in terms of right of way, but I don't know if that answers your question at all?
It does to some degree. So you're saying that there, there are a whole host of streets in the city that could use improvement? And so I guess the question would be, A, do we want to do that? And then B, how much funding do we want to allocate to do that on a, basically, on priority basis, right? Is that sort of the crux of the question? And so right now, it looks like we've, I've got $15,000 figure. What is it that staff would recommend? I mean, it sounds like when you're talking about one or two projects, and they're in the neighborhood of $100,000, you're not talking about 500 grand a year. You might be talking about 100 or 125, or what is it that you seek or would want to have that you could effectively use?
I, from a staff point of view, I'd, I'd love to be able to look at every street that we see and see a potential improvement and be able to do it. But it, it really, I hate to push it, I, I'm not happy to push it back on you, but it really becomes your question of priorities.
But in terms of how much money, for example, if we wanted to do five projects a year, could you do five projects a year? Or could, realistically, you could do one or two?
So it, it depends on what level of, of community interaction that we're looking for here. If you're looking to do, you know, if, I think, excuse me, I think many of you are familiar with the Neighborhood Conservation Program in Arlington. So if you take that model, which is intensely, has a, has a very community engagement, very intense community engagement focus, those projects typically end up costing $450,000 to $550,000 when you add in the staff time and the construction costs per. And it typically requires one engineer and one planner, about three-quarters of a planner's time, and one engineer for about 12 months, 12 total, 12 months of man-hours, generally extended over two years or so. That's a pretty intense, intense program for a city of our size.
But the project we just heard about, that we've discussed, is in the ballpark of $100,000.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So is that not a good model for the city? In other words, we should be looking at the $500,000 project?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just trying to provide what the kind of bounds are here. And I know people are very familiar with Arlington and see some of the, the good stuff that they do over there. I wanted to kind of set a baseline of what that requires. I, to me, it doesn't seem feasible that we can support that level of investment on a large number of streets. But again, that becomes a question for you all.
Let me, with the PED Plan, we identified $34 million worth of projects in the city. And we also laid out priorities of how we would do those. And what I think happened in many respects is that all the controversy that naturally happens with every project kind of got balled up into, the whole city was concerned about that at, at one time. And so the model here is a competitive process with rules and criteria that will allow us to do, I would say, two a year. That's, that's what we put out there for council's consideration. That allows us, not with a huge staff effort, but people who will dedicate a portion of their time to manage these projects and be able to do so effectively.
Well, I think if that's what your suggestion might be, is two a year, I suspect you'll have broad support from this council, and if there are anyone who objects, you know, speak up. But I suspect that the answer, if that is your question, is yes, it's absolutely something that we would want to consider and want to, you know, undertake, given the details and the priorities, et cetera. But I think it, it sounds reasonable, based on our conversation. So, I mean, unless there's anything else on that point, I want to move on to the next, because we do have plenty more on this agenda. Absolutely.
What, what's the staff cost to support two a year?
Well, we'll have to, if we could let, let us flush that out a little bit more with the, with the program guidelines and criteria, because as, as Mike said, it's, it could vary a whole lot. If they're super inclusive and we negotiate everything about them, it would be very high. If we try to lay out criteria and a menu, or here's, here's the, here's the go-to playlist of what we like to do for traffic calming, we think we can make it simpler.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead on to the next item, if we can.
The next two items, I think, are pretty simple and pro forma. They're council requests for authorization.
So, item 2B, as it was originally labeled, the title is authorize the city manager to designate the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, the N V T C, as its agent. So this is a continuation of what we've already been doing as a city, that there's a working relationship that the N V T C has with all N V T C member jurisdictions, which is all the Northern Virginia jurisdictions, that N V T C acts as the city's agent on behalf of requesting and administering grant funds that come through the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation. So that includes things like support for Womata Capital and Womata operating expenses, as well as, as well as other transit-related expenses. And the city has always had N V T C as its agent. The city is required to designate N V T C, N V T C as its agent every year, so this is an ongoing authority for the city manager to make this designation without coming back to authority for the city manager to make this designation without coming back to council every year.
Okay. Any next item?
Next item is originally labeled 2C. This is execution, authority for the city manager to execute annual project agreements for not just Womata-related funds, but all funds that are coming through DRPT and have been approved in the city's adopted budget ordinance. The city council had previously granted the city manager authority to execute Womata-related agreements. That was in fiscal year 2013. This year, we went out and applied for funds related to our bus stop work. We may also want to go out and apply for funds related to TDM efforts. So this would expand the city manager's existing authority to cover all those agreements, not just the Womata agreements.
Thank you.
And then the last transportation item is the, the NVTA 30% funds, and I think we want to just give a brief understanding for council as to the response we got from the NVTA, what we think that means, a little bit of an understanding of the risks, and any other further clarifications we might need.
Let me give that a start overview, and then Paul can answer any questions. So, we know we've had an ongoing dialogue on accessing the 30% money from NVTA, have to do a match. Council has approved match money for the two years as standalone matching revenue-sharing grant. When we went to start doing the certification with NVTA, since this is a new project, they raised questions as to what we had used the money on was meeting the definition for the commercial and industrial tax. Council has not adopted this commercial-industrial, aka CNI, but used the equivalent you dedicated fund balance out of the local funding for this. So in that process, you'll see the letter attached that the city attorney, planning public works and city manager's office worked, asked for the interpretation. They inter, came back and said, yes, it is different than CNI, your equivalent, but then now made a determination that what we can use our 30% money for, that's our local money, that's matching that money, has to be identical. We are still sorting out what does that mean project-wise. We are confident that for FY '14 and '15, we're fine. We need to continue to work that. We also need to clarify for them the legal connection that they made to make that determination. So as you can see in the memo, staff, both legal, project, and financial are continuing to work those issues with our NVTA partners. It does have some implications for council going long-term, and so we wanted to make sure you're aware of this. One, as it current stands with that determination, the best course of action for the city is to do the CNI equivalent, because that's more flexible for the types of projects we have needs for, because a CNI specifically requires, as you'll see on the front of the paragraph memo, new construction, new transit, things that we are not going to be building new roads. The 30% is more flexible for that. So at this point, staff's recommendation would be, as we go into future budgets and addressing your prioritization, to continue a dedicated funding stream for the 30% match, not be looking at it at the CNI under this current determination. But still, staff recommends we need an ongoing dedicated funding source, so we can still leverage and bring down that 30%. This was a pretty significant determination. The letter we sent and the response is here, and so we wanted to take the opportunity to make sure council was all aware of it as we continue to work with NVTA at your elected level liaison work, and also with staff.
Thank you. Tim, maybe Vice Mayor Snyder is the resident expert on transportation issues. Any thoughts?
After the discussion a few minutes ago, I'm not sure I want to admit that. But more seriously, I, I think the usefulness of the council sort of every now and then digging into this is to understand how many moving parts there are with regard to the whole transportation scene, everything from the large picture, which council member Oliver mentioned, to neighborhood traffic calming. And then this is a key part, because it is, it is going to be an ongoing effort to get a fair return from the state transportation project. Even though our citizens are paying into it, there's a political agenda that we're going to constantly need to fight against, which is to funnel all that money into a few pet projects in the western part of the region. And so, it's going to be a constant struggle, and you'll be briefed from time to time about how that's going and key policy issues. I do want to address quickly the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. I think it's a really good idea that we fund that at a higher level, but keep in mind, you would not need to spend $100,000 at, at Parker and, and Kent if you put up four stop signs. So, you have to understand that in rejecting the simple, straightforward approach, be it speed humps or stop signs, which the engineers say we should not do those things, then you trigger a whole chain of events, including the need to include the community, because then you involve major landscaping and major expensive new projects. So, we need to, and I, I do think staff has worked hard on this, CACT, but we have to understand that certain decisions are made that complicate issues that result in the expenditure of more money. So, that's a point that I wanted to make with regard to that. But going back to this one, the last item, it is, it is going to, to be a constant struggle, and that's exactly what we're going to be engaged in over the next few years, to make sure that our citizens get the value that they're contributing.
We appreciate it, and hopefully you'll be able to stay on top of it as the representatives and members of these bodies for us. Appreciate your help. Unless there's anything else on this one, why don't we go ahead and move on to the next item, Mr. Shields? Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
And we're, is this West End, Brown? No, we, we have a resolution for the council that we request be on the agenda at your meeting next week, stating that, resolving that the Potomac River is the source of the city's drinking water, and the headlands for the Potomac are located within the George-Washington National Forest, and horizontal drilling could introduce contaminants into the Potomac River, thereby compromising the city's drinking water, and, and supporting the U.S. Forest Service proposal that would prohibit the use of horizontal fracturing in the George-Washington National Forest. And this comes to the council from the Environmental Services Council. Council member Dan Z brought it to the council's attention at your last work session. We have done the research on the other localities that have taken similar actions, including Fairfax Water, which provides the drinking water now for the City of Falls Church, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, which operates the Dale Carlia Treatment Plant from which we get our water. Joined by Tim Stevens, who's, who's, through the Environmental Services Council, who would advocate for the city council to take this position, and Cindy Masters, the author of the resolution.
Before, before we begin discussion on this, I haven't heard back from our Ethics Office about this, and given that it's a, it looks like the resolution would go to the federal government, I'm going to sort of not engage in the discussions until I hear back, just as a prudential matter, and then we'll come, come back with it. But definitely, my name shouldn't be on anything that goes over to the feds, as folks know. So, just a reminder on that.
Do you have some advice, Mayor Snyder?
Just, Mr. Mayor, a comment. No one would object to council member Baruch's removing himself from discussion of this issue.
Okay, Mr. Shields, or I guess, Mr. Stevens, briefly?
Basically, again, it's important to point out what this isn't. This is not a pronouncement on the issue of hydraulic fracturing. This is really just focused on the source of our drinking water, and the desire of many jurisdictions now throughout Virginia not to see heavy industrial production occur in that area. It also happens to be one of the last remaining fairly intact wild areas east of the Mississippi, and so it also serves as a source of recreation. And if you've seen some of these hydraulic fracturing installations, it is a heavy industrial activity, and there's no doubt that would interrupt somebody's enjoyment of that area. So, this area was, or this issue was brought to us by our neighbors, by Arlington, by Fairfax, by Alexandria, and as I said, it's also been addressed by a number of the jurisdictions, cities like Roanoke, Harrisonburg, Stanton, and also four counties that are out close to the George Washington National Forest, have all expressed their concern with this issue. So, that's the genesis of our bringing it to your attention.
The jurisdictions you mentioned all have passed resolutions essentially similar to what we were asked to adopt?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Questions, comments, briefly?
Just briefly, thank you for bringing this forward. I intend to support it to staff, a couple of typographical issues on the resolution itself. Line 59, Fairfax Water, apostrophe S, I think. Line 62, I don't believe there needs to be a "the" in front of 10 to 15 years. And 65, nation, apostrophe S, water supply. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you, Mr. Z, for bringing this to our attention.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. Question, have there been scientific studies that would demonstrate the effect on our water from fracking in the George Washington National Forest?
It's an interesting issue. The problem is, when you engage in horizontal fracturing, you're down miles below the surface of the earth, so there's really no way to get monitoring equipment there. There have been plenty of studies on the issue of vertical drilling, and of course, there've been a number of contaminants and issues there. But there are no studies, because you basically can't do it when it's down that, that far below the earth.
Have there been studies that predict, project the impact of this on our water? Because if we're going to make a limited statement, it has to be based upon scientific evidence that if something occurs, that would be a negative, and therefore, we're resolving against that activity. What is the science that would support this resolution? Well, because we'll be asked this. People will say, you're going beyond your normal functions as city council. Fracking offers the opportunity for the U.S. to be energy independent. I mean, you'll hear it all. So my question is, if we're taking an action based upon a physical effect, which will be our water quality will be harmed as a result of fracking, what's the scientific support for that conclusion?
Well, I don't think we would be undertaking any scientific studies, but we certainly are looking to other agencies that have that skill set, such as the Department of the Army, the Washington Aqueduct, as well as the number of governments that I mentioned, Fairfax Water, they all have, of course, significant ability to investigate this issue. So we basically are taking their lead.
And if I may add briefly, the Congress has directed EPA to undertake a, a study of this, so the research will be occurring. It hasn't occurred yet, and so the wording on this is to note that we have concern about the potential, but council is not being asked to make a statement that is based on scientific research.
Okay, but there's a logical, I don't want to, there's a logical inconsistency. We express concern about potential impact, and then we say, don't do it. Well, if we were going to be consistent with the first statement, then we would say, don't do it until the impact is studied. But we're making a firm, unlimited determination that it's a bad thing, and it may very well be. All I'm asking for is, if someone asks me, what's the science behind this, what would I say? Beyond the fact that other jurisdictions have resolved in this way, what's the science that supports, not number one, because I certainly can understand how we'd want to express concern, but number two, we're supporting that it be prohibited? So you see, we're going from an expression of concern to this is the action without a time limit on it, or without connection to science. So all I'm asking, what is the scientific basis for the second part of the resolution?
I think there's general agreement that there's risk associated with this process, if for no other reason than the fact that you're putting in a lot of toxic chemicals in the process of doing this. And so again, I'd like to make the distinction that, you know, we're not trying to say, don't do hydraulic fracturing in general. This is just saying, don't do it in this one place, would have absolutely no impact on the overall supply of natural gas. This is really not addressed at that issue. It's just saying, in the place where we get our drinking water, it's not a good idea to take a risk of, of a heavy industrial process.
So, can we have a little bit more information on exactly that point? That is, the point that you're making is that there is a significant risk posed by fracking?
I wouldn't say significant. I would just say, any risk associated with the area where we get our drinking water.
Well, I, basically what I'm asking for is the scientific support for the action which we're saying that we support, which is, the Forest Service shouldn't just study it, it should prohibit it.
Yeah, and it's interesting, too, that the Forest Service itself started down the road of saying that they agreed with prohibiting this. It's only in the last year or so, when they've gotten a lot of pressure from the industry, that, that they've taken a second look and are hesitating before they issue their, their final plan.
All right. Well, let me just bring this to a close very quickly. I would appreciate if the ESC could provide the scientific support for the resolution, the action that we propose to take. That is, that fracking in an area where groundwater is involved poses an unacceptable risk.
Well, again, I mean, we're not proposing those words, unacceptable risk. We're just saying, any risk. And again, with horizontal fracturing, the problem is that you don't have monitors seven miles down below the, the earth. So, I mean, I can certainly ask for organizations like the Southern Environmental Law Center, which we've been working with, and who's advised us on this, for information that they have. But I certainly don't have a list of, of scientific studies. That wasn't what the genesis of this item was.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Z?
Yeah, let me just try to help you out here a little bit, and I understand where you're trying to go with this council member, Snyder. But in fact, this is the study that you're, that you've asked for, this environmental impact study, and the fact that the station's laws preclude the monitoring and the scientific study, which is, I think you, any reasonable person would ask for, but this is immune from any law covered by the, any circumstances covered by the Safe Drinking Water Act and the Clean Water Act. That is to say, that they're barred from studying the effect of, of any, any activity from hydraulic fracturing. So, given that, there's no way you can actually get to that unless you mount up an effort and do it voluntarily, and then, then that would have no weight of, on the study anyway, because, well, let's explain that. So, Mr. Stevens is trying to explain to you that he's not against hydraulic fracturing in total, or he's not really even commenting on the risk. It's just that the Park Service has asked for the opinions of people that may be affected, both those that want to drill and those that don't want to drill, and it's kind of how an EIS gets done, so.
Thank you. Other comments? Questions? Okay, Mr. Snyder, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just, it might be helpful to contact the Forest Service to get the basis for their request that we request that it be prohibited, because that's what I understand from the second part of the resolution. All I'm trying to do is, I don't want to take an action based upon hearsay. I want it to, if we're taking an action along this line, at the request of the Forest Service, well, why does the Forest Service, why do they have that proposal? It must have some scientific basis for it, and that's all I'm trying to get here, is what's, we're, we're asking for a particular action which goes beyond our normal activities, and we'll be challenged on that. So I want to be able to say, we took this action for the following reasons, based upon a risk to our drinking water, which is a reasonable thing that we should be concerned about.
Okay. Unless there, did you have a comment, Mr. Duncan?
Just one, very quickly. Thank you for those questions. I think they are good, and we will hear about this from the public. The last page of the material we were given with the Forest Service statement is, I don't know, helpful to me. It says, given the questionable nature of the development potential in the forest, along with the high level of concern for water quality, the plan does not allow horizontal drilling. Should production in nearby areas demonstrate the gas is developable, and that it can be done without impact to water quality, the Forest could reconsider the issue in the future. So, I don't know, as I, as I look at this, I'm, I'm basically seeing it as a resolution which says it's, it's not prudent to drill first and get studies later. It would be prudent to understand more about, you know, what's going on before we drill in this particularly fragile and critically important to our water quality area. I mean, whatever... important to our water quality area. I mean, whatever the process itself may do to the water quality, it's indisputable, as the language says. On line 110, fracking, construction of gas, line 112, "Construction of gas drilling facilities such as well pads, access roads, and pipelines also can increase runoff and sediment levels in rivers, which increases water treatment costs for downstream localities." I don't think there's anybody who's traveled anywhere where fracking is going on would say that that's indisputably true, and is something we should certainly avoid in this particularly fragile area. So I don't know. Those are the two sections, as I read the materials, that convinced me that when somebody posed reasonable questions about, "Why are we getting into this?", I could give what I thought were fairly succinct reasonable answers.
Okay. Why don't we, with that, go ahead and wrap this up and move on. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for coming out this evening. We appreciate your time and your efforts. Mr. Shields, you want to move on to the next item?
The next item is a briefing by Danny Schlitt. And we have other members of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board here on the West End Park, and we're very excited to bring this to the city council. It's been a long time coming. And while Danny and others join us here at the table, the city acquired this 1.3 acres immediately adjacent to the existing West End Park. We bought it from the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department. And upon acquiring it, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board did a master plan with a lot of community involvement about the types of, what kind of park this should be. And it was designated to be a neighborhood park, but also a park that would have community-wide park attributes to it. It would, the plan laid out much of the features of the park that you see, that ultimately went into the landscape design for it, including the skate park feature, which was in the master plan process and now is a part of this plan. And we know that that is an area that did get a lot of comment as it went through the process, and so we're prepared to discuss that feature of the park as well. One thing I'll just note before I turn it over to Danny, that the, this project has been in the capital improvements program and went through its five-year planning process in the CIP, and in December, the bonds were issued for this park. So the funding is available for it, and the next step would be to move forward with a request for bids. Before we take that step, we want the council to be aware of the plans, answering any questions that you have, and then discuss proceeding. So, Mr. Schlitt?
Thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Advisory Board for being here tonight. And I think Mr. Shields really covered kind of our dusting off process. This has been a long time in the making, and that's really, I think, what we came for tonight, was to dust off the old set of plans. A few of the council members have been here from the, from almost the beginning of the process, but we're certainly here when we went through the council recommendation to Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's approval of the project, and then subsequently, the signatures on the actual site plan. And a few of you are new enough to where, I'm sure you've heard of the project, but have not seen it up close at any point in time. And to, Wyatt really did go through the basics of it, but we have two pieces of property that have become one, and we have one that's already developed as a park, and the other one that we want to kind of put together with that, have a nice little walking path, add a skate park feature for some of the pre-teen and teens, that has been widely discussed over the years, many years, and have a brand-new entrance right off of Broad Street, and have a nice big sign that states that, and let people, as they come into this city, either for the first time or the 10,000th time, you know, see the park from that entrance, and have the traditional entrance over there off of Grove. And one day, we'll work an entrance off of Falls Avenue, gain some access to a small piece of property, maybe an easement, and get people access right off of Falls, and welcome them right into this neighborhood/community park. And really, I don't have a whole lot, I can answer questions, I could go into this further if you need more information, but that's really what we're doing. We've been in the process a long time. I really think the timeline will give you a lot of the information as to where we've been, some of the public meetings we've been through, some of the input. As you know, back in 2006, 2007, and after that, we went through a long and very well-thought-out process of doing park master plans for all of the parks. This particular park master planning process was done specifically in mind with the thought that we would go right into a site plan process and review. That was not the case in a lot of the other parks. A lot of those parks, the park master plans were done knowing that we weren't going to get there right away, but we knew what we wanted to do in the future, through the efforts of the community, through the neighbors, through the public sessions and the public hearings we had in regard to a lot of those. This one in particular, we knew that we had just purchased this new piece of land, we wanted to do another park project, and we wanted to tie it in. So the park master planning process was really the process by which we got the site plan review started. The neighbors were heavily involved, and it was a fun process. It was really kind of, in my, for me personally, it was the beginning of my time on the park side of things with the previous director, Mr. Herman. And with that said, we've had a few of our board members that were here from the very beginning. And if I may ask Charlie, Charlie O'Hara, past chair on many occasions and longtime board member, if he wants to add a few comments, or if any of the board members would like to say anything.
Thank you, Charlie O'Hara. Danny, I don't have much more than what you and Wyatt have added. This is, this was an interesting park, because as Danny said, initially, there was a smaller park that was developed. I mean, basically, Harry English, you know, through the force of will of one person, put a park in this area, landscaped it absolutely beautiful. And then, as we went through the process of where to put affordable, senior affordable dwellings, one of the thought sites that was being considered was adjacent to West End Park. And it was determined at that time that by the city, by the council at that time, that they did not want it in that area, and there was an exchange with the Volunteer Fire Department to make this, to acquire that 1.3 acre specifically for the expansion of West End Park. And like Danny said, we then started a process, a three-year process of having public hearings, meeting with the public, going over with Patton, Harrison, Rust, you know, various iterations of the development. And as part of the process, we were also trying to fit the needs of the community. As I can tell you that the young gentleman who initially approached us about the skate feature has been out of college for three years and now works for Arlington County. This has been way, way too long in happening. We're not going to have a full skate park in the city. We're not going to be able to put something like Arlington or Fairfax has, but we can put a skate feature element in this park. And if you've looked at, I'm sure you all have, looked at what's in the back, it's a piece of art almost, but it's a skatable element. And this project was designed to make it an active park. The benches, you know, the art, the skate features, it can be used. But it's also a peaceful area. There's a walking path to connect it with the old park. It's a design. And one of the other features that came out of this, as we always have heard, we've always talked about, what do we have when we enter our city? What are the features that you have when you enter the city? Do we have something really nice at Lee Highway as you come in from Arlington? No, not really. Do you have something nice as you're coming in from Lee Highway and from the Maryfield area? Not really. Do we have anything really nice coming in from Seven Corners as you're coming down East Broad? Not really. But we're hoping that we're going to have something that you'll be able to really be proud of as you're entering the city, coming east on Route 7. And that's going to be a park with a beautiful entrance feature, we hope. And we debated for a long time what the entrance feature is going to be like, and we decided to put a main entrance off of Seven, so the people coming into the city can be proud and can see, you know, we believe in a park system. We believe in open space. And here, here's a gateway into our city. Here's a gateway into our park. This design was well, well-vetted. Hopefully, it would have been built long before now, but now's the time to do it.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go ahead and have comments, questions from council? Any comments, any questions? Mr. Zee?
I do have questions, and I can certainly hear the passion by the Rexon Parks Board. It's well-founded. I have looked at this plan. I've agonized over how to support this, and what I don't like about it, or what I do like about this. So I do have some concerns at this point. I think I voiced them previously, but only just stated publicly. First of all, your own statements with respect to dusting off the set of plans belies a need for certain elements here, in particular, the skating skateboard feature. I actually looked at the site today, and what you're proposing to put the skateboard feature means it's going to be out of sight, up on a plateau hidden by vegetation. And we already know what happened last time we tried that experiment with the skateboard feature, albeit temporary. At that time, it was early to mid 2000s. Brought out a group of people that just claimed a property for their own, and quite frankly, acted as bullies. So just thinking about this, I am not against improving the park. The other piece of this, I'll come back to skateboarding, is that right now, we have a drainage situation on Grove when it rains. And this park, the way it's designed, only takes care of the stormwater from the park. So it ignores the opportunity to treat other stormwater that runs down Grove. I think that's just a mistake, because it just means that we'll have to, the city will have to pick up the cost to treat that water. I think it's really not that difficult to put in a detention feature here. And coming back to skateboarding, when you first designed this feature, skateboarding was a huge thing. So I just did some research here, passed this around. Next is fishing. Skateboarding has declined 25% in the last three years. It's not just backed up by one study. The State of Skate says that participation has dropped 30% in the last 10 years as well, in both casual, regular, and frequent. Google, when you first began this, set skateboarding, the baseline in 2004 of 100%, down to 14%. That means nearly nine out of 10 skateboarders no longer skateboard. The good news is that skateboarding injuries have declined 44% this period of time, because they wear safer equipment, they suffer less from distortion, fracture, lacerations, contusions. No, it's because they no longer skateboard. And I would say that this is probably the wrong thing to put in this park here that's now very bucolic, very pastoral, by your own admission, where people enjoy this with their children, they picnic, they walk their dogs. And I just don't see the need to put this feature where there is no longer a need for this in our city. You said you've been doing this for over a decade. Well, the time has passed for skateboarding. If the time is here to treat the stormwater that runs down Grove, I think that as council, we ought to be able to look at this situation and take the larger view, instead of saying, "Let's spend half a million dollars and just build it the way it is, that we take care of the stormwater, take care of the park." I'm not against doing many of the features here. I think that's probably a good thing, but the way it's currently structured, I just cannot support it.
Thank you, Mr. Zee. Other comments, other questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. A few thoughts. The sign on West Broad Street, I think this will be an easy one. I would love us to say, "The City of Falls Church is West End Park." If you drive into the City of Falls Church from the west side, we've already missed one excellent opportunity to brand ourselves as the City of Falls Church by not helping the school board afford to put the name of the city on the side of Maryland Henderson School. So I would ask if, for the $11,000 or so dollars that you're proposing to spend on the sign, that we might emphasize the fact that this is a City of Falls Church feature. What do the neighbors think about what we're doing here in Toto, and particularly as it relates to the skate park? I've been going to this park since the kids were little, so I know well the area that you're talking about, and I do agree that, as the statement on the back page says, it's a, you know, bucolic, contemplative. It's a really nice space. And I kind of miss the skateboard years, I guess. I was busy with Little League or whatever, but I guess I would be interested also in kind of an update about the demand for that, and the, I'm sure Arlington has lots of experience with the liability and injuries and so forth associated with it. I just don't know anything about it, and I feel like I ought to be able to, you know, answer or point to answers to those questions if anyone raises them. The design, maybe this is a little too down in the weeds, but this came up also when we were talking about the Roberts Park. The neighborhood park/community park distinction, again, here seems, if you look at page three, starting on the bottom of page two and top of page three, you know, is it a community park or neighborhood park? Well, it isn't, it is, it isn't, it is. In the space of about a dozen lines, we kind of come down on both sides. And, you know, the importance of this is that people have an expectation, as it says somewhere in here, that you're going to have someplace to park at a park that has a broader community use. And I'm not sure that there's parking contemplated, at least in the drawings that I'm looking at here. I don't know. More broadly, I'm not sure if I understand why we have a distinction between neighborhood and community parks in such a small city. That's something that I would ask you all to think about, because it seems to raise expectations that we don't intend to meet, you know? We say it's going to be a community park, but we're really not going to provide very much parking for it. So maybe we should just call them all community parks and tell everybody, you know, "You really need to walk to these things, because there isn't any place that's very far." Or maybe it's the other way around. Maybe we say, "Community park has 10 parking spaces, by God. Otherwise, it can't be called a community park." At any rate, that's just something about this specific design that I'm curious about. Budgetarily, finally, the last question is, does relate to the budget. So where does money from this, for this come from? Is this CIP budgeted, or so?
It's approved in the adopted CIP. Final amount was in FY14 funds.
And the final amount was, say, $430,000, $430,000. And of that, which, of that, what portion is for the skate park, skatable furnishings, or $80,000? Does the concrete work related to the skate park, $45,000? Trying to get some feel for what share of the $430,000 is devoted to the, as you say, the skate element, because it's not really a skate park, it's a skate sculpture.
That's correct.
So how much money are we talking about we're going to spend on?
Well, the estimate we have, if you find the, on the estimate page, was done by the group that did the engineering work, and this is obviously just an estimate. We're within weeks of going to an actual bid process that will give us some real cost when the contractors start bidding, but it kind of explains, you know, which portions are going to take up which pieces of that $430,000, according to the estimate. And it looks like on this, the skate park furnishings are in the vicinity of about $80,000.
Okay, so it's listed here, it's about a fifth of the cost of the park would be for the skate element. Okay, well, that's something that, like I say, I guess I would like a little more information on, because that's a fairly significant portion of the budget devoted to something which is, you know, as you accurately describe it, is just an element. Finally, the one thing that I particularly identify with what Mr. Zee said is that this is an opportunity. I mean, this is a big space, and I'm all for making this a really big, usable, you know, space, green space, contemplative and I mean, this is a big space, and I'm all for making this a really big usable, you know, space, green space, contemplative and so forth. It is an opportunity, I think, perhaps in the stormwater area. It's also, I mean, we're basically building a really nice park for what I think is, I hope, will be a development at the corner of West and Broad. And as I said earlier tonight, to me, this is a golden opportunity for the private sector to cooperate with us in helping finance what's essentially going to be an amenity. That will be enjoyed by many of the people who are living in the proposed development if we go forward with it. In my mind, it is yet another reason to consider that proposal seriously if it comes to us because it helps us pay for something that will be a community benefit. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Any other comments? Mr. Snyder, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot. I like a great deal of this, and I want to thank everybody involved, the Parks and Rec Advisory Group and the staff. And I do want to move forward, and I love the notion of this being a gateway, so I think you're all right on. Is the neighborhood basically satisfied with this plan at this point?
Yes, and I will say that the last neighborhood public meeting we had was back when the plan was adopted in 2009. We have every intention of taking this same dusting off process back to the, an advisory board meeting, a public meeting, and make sure that everybody, you know, gets back into it. But we had some real positive input. Everybody, several of the folks in the area were completely on board through the process.
So you're going to run that past?
We'll run it back past them.
And then the two issues that have been raised, primarily the skateboard area and then the stormwater. Do we have a stormwater issue on Grove? And that's a question for Public Utilities. Do we have a stormwater issue on Grove or don't we?
Can you stand up so the camera can see?
Yeah.
He's got the wireless, he's up there.
We do have some challenges in that area, largely due to the topography, and it was formerly a stream. We haven't done, we haven't explicitly studied whether this West End Park area could be useful in solving or helping to mitigate the challenges that we have over there. So I'm not sure that this is a solution. But there are improvements that could be made over there. We do deal with some high groundwater issues there.
So if we were to try to link this to the stormwater issue, we're talking about potentially major months of further delay on the park or what? I'm just, Councilmember Zee asked a legitimate question. I'm just trying to get an answer to it, that is.
Yeah, you'd have a number of obstacles. One would just be the study and design would take, you know, many months, perhaps a year or more. You'd also then have to, I would presume, kick it back into another site plan process because this is a site plan, as I understand it, that was adopted and is ready to go. So that would certainly change all of that. It would entail a significant amount of time.
And since this is basically a park, it's fundamentally natural so that if we continue to work on stormwater issues in Grove, we needed, it turned out, the park in the future could play some sort of role without harming it as a park, we could go back and do that, it seems to me, right? I mean, I don't see how, I don't see how delaying this plan at this point could benefit the stormwater issue any more than going forward with this plan. And then down the road, if this became a part of dealing with the stormwater, we could deal with it at that point. I mean, so I don't see how holding this up to do all the research on, first, what is the stormwater problem? What are the options? Is this the best option? Going through all of that, it seems to me would be a time-consuming and potentially very costly process.
Yeah, I can't confirm or deny, in a sense, that it would or wouldn't help.
What I'm suggesting is, if this would become a part of an answer to a stormwater issue, we could do that later. And that doing what we're doing now is basically making this a natural area so we're not doing a super amount of engineering. So we wouldn't be undoing engineering to make this a part of a stormwater issue in the future. That's what I'm trying to get at. Yeah.
Without knowing what the ultimate answer is, I can't really.
Okay, well, in my view, I don't, if we were engineering some massive project with a lot of concrete, you'd want to sort of make sure that it could play a role. That's not what this is. What we're talking about is making this a natural area. And if down the road, this becomes a reasonable part of a stormwater issue, we can deal with it at that point. Okay? So that's the point on that. On the skate park, I'm not a fan of skate parks, frankly, for liability reasons. And I know that it was put in there. I recall the public request for it. I mean, I've got to rely on the experts to say, "Is there a demand for this? What's the level of demand? And how do we trade that off against liability and other issues?" I mean, personally, I'm not a fan of it. I'd rather that be more contemplative area, open space or whatever. But it's there for a reason. You put it there for a reason. So I've got to rely on you guys telling me that the demand is there for use in our parks to offset the liability and the cost factor, which is, Councilmember Duncan brought out, is a significant amount of money.
Sure, briefly.
On a couple of the things that have been said, is as I understand Councilman Zee's, you were talking with, dealing with stuff coming off of Grove. And as I look at this plan, if you're going to try to pipe stuff from Grove into where the new development is going to be, you're going right through a fully developed park that's been blooming and growing for 20 years that you're going to have to use to get the water over there. With regards to the skate feature, yeah, whatever, yeah. When we went through this design process, we were trying to see that at least some part of this was active recreational use. We have parks that are passive use. We have Frady Park, which is absolutely beautiful, but all you do is go in there and walk. It's nothing for the kids in our community. So in looking at developing this park and going through the 10-year process, what we were looking for is, what could we put in here that is active, that can get our kids doing something? There's not enough really area in here for a playing field. We looked at that because that was the first thing we wanted to put on there. When we looked at it, can we put a playing field in there? We don't have a significant land mass to put a playing field in there. So what else could we put in there? Well, we have basketball courts set around the city. We have tennis courts set around the city. One of the things that the demand was for, and yes, the demand may have been better when we started this back then, but as I go around the streets now, I still see a heck of a lot of people on skateboards. And if you want to go into the District of Columbia and see people skating all over the features, down their stairs, rails, whatever, they're still there. But if you look at the design of this park, where is that skate feature? The skate feature is basically within 50 feet, maybe 75, I don't have my scale, of a car wash that's operating the whole time. We put this in a place where it would not interfere with the peaceful nature of where Harry English grew all those beautiful plants. We have a trail that walks around. But it was considered as to how to meld a passive use of a park with an active use of a park. We need to address the youth of this community. It has not been done for many years. And this is a method to attempt, and it's a creative method to attempt to allow them to have a space to use something.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Mr. Baruch?
So just on the stormwater front, something that's, you know, that I've spoken about before, I think Dan makes a good point. But I'm not quite seeing how it fits into Grove unless there's some movement of the water that happens. But Danny, I know that in our discussions about sort of where the parks, the pocket parks, you know, which I'll put in this category, fit in, they all, from what you explained to me, they all tend to be at the lowest point. And that's why there's drainage issues in nearly all the parks or significant portions of the park. So I think it's worth looking at, you know, can we add Sistern similar to what we did? More arraigned garden kind of features, similar to what we did in Lincoln, that can kind of help those issues that aren't, you know, totally solving a major issue but helping to enhance the long-term use of the park. It may be worth looking at, it still fits in the plan and doesn't sort of, you know, bust the bank, if you will. And then two, I think Dan does make an understanding sort of why the skate feature is situated where it is. What I can't tell from this is if there's decent line of sight from West Broad or any of the other angles. Just to get some visual look at that feature, I think it's a, you know, I sort of have a different perspective on it. You know, this could be used just by one individual, and if there's an accident kind of happen, you want to just make sure somebody is able to observe and there's some eyes on, if you will, to that feature. And it's just hard to tell with these angles.
Yeah, and if I may touch on that real quick, if you look at it right now and if you went over there today, you saw the growth that would stop you from seeing it from, let's say, between the car wash and the bike bridge there. But that, it's intended to have that removed, and it will be open to that sidewalk, the new entrance to the park, if you would, as you go by. So that will open up tremendously, and it won't be hidden behind any new vegetation or anything. And some of the vegetation that's there is planned to be removed. There'll be a nice buffer between the car wash and the new entrance, but there's not, there's no plan to really buffer the skate park features from the front of the entrance. And if I may just take one more minute, I appreciate Councilman Duncan's concerns about the questions between neighborhood and community. And I often have that same thing. I believe that one major thought, as I've read through some of the notes on this, is that one big opportunity to make this a community park is that, and as we talk about walkable communities, we're right next to the bike bridge, we're right next to the W and O D. So it really does welcome the community, and you don't necessarily have to come in a car and park there. It is a centrally located, very easy access. Most of the kids in the school that walk home heading east at the end of school will walk right through that park on a daily basis. And if they have their skateboard in hand, they certainly skate, or I guess they don't have it in hand, they skate through there. And this gives them an opportunity to use those.
Danny, on the point of the bikes, I'm glad that we're, you know, there is going to be sort of a touch back with the community given that it's been, you know, some years since the master plan was put together. So I think it's important to do that and just revisit it so people aren't going, like, where is this coming from? All of a sudden, we can say, "Well, it was approved back in 2007," so I'm glad to hear that we're doing that. And then one thing that, just kind of looking at this, that occurred to me is that, and again, I don't think this is radical. It may be in the realm of doable. And some of the features that are being considered to be put in as far as the skate park feature, I think it would be, given the trail is right there, to do something maybe a little bit more innovative. And I think other communities have done it, where it's a skate park slash bike BMX kind of feature. I don't know if any thought was given to that. And again, I'm not an expert in this, and so I was never into BMX-ing, except for like a short period, and I was terrible at it when I was a kid. That, you know, some of the rails may be the same, or some way of integrating maybe both, if that's possible. Just increasing the use, and given that it's in proximity to the bike trail, it might be. And again, I'll leave that sort of to what the community views are and et cetera. But it struck me as something that is worth kind of thinking about. You know, and again, I don't think it's radical, hopefully. But maybe worth talking to the community about, at least soliciting feedback about whether that's something that people would be interested in. So it'd be sort of utilizing the same equipment, et cetera.
Okay, I'd say I've got a few questions, if they're none from the rest of the council, questions slash comments. And if you could maybe just give me brief answers on them. With respect to the possible future trail connection, what's the status of that? In other words, do we need to get an easement? Do we have an easement? What's?
There is no easement. None has been acquired. There's been discussions. I think Cindy was the lead on that in the years past to try to get it from the owner of the lot on the other side. But nothing's been accomplished. I mean, discussions have been started, been stopped, and started.
What's the status now of them?
There's nothing that's been had. Cindy, when was the last time you would have had any with that? Three years?
Probably three to four now. They were not interested at that time.
Where would that be?
From Falls Avenue.
Falls Avenue.
I mean, to me, that's very important because you basically have like half of this park, or half of the side of the park that's not really open to the other side. And it just seems to me that would be a priority of acquiring that either through, you know, negotiated means or maybe condemnation. I don't know what's appropriate in this circumstance.
I think they didn't want to negotiate, and they basically were happy with keeping ownership of the land and letting the informal use. I mean, if you look there, there's a footpath in.
Parking lot there from Curry, so there's a path in there. So they don't, my guess is they don't want to put a restriction on the land for whatever is going to be developed in the future. So, you know, condemning an easement through there or acquiring an easement as part of the redevelopment of that property and when and if it occurs will probably be, I assume, what would happen. But it should always be considered as.
I mean, I would encourage that now because to me, it just kind of finishes this park and really opens it up. I walk that way. Sometimes my kids go to school that way. It's just not, it could be much better. And particularly since we're spending a pretty good chunk of change on fixing up the park, seems to me that would be a really great way to take care of the other side of it. I guess I'm cognizant as well to Mr. Zee's comment about stormwater. And I'm also cognizant of the fact that it may delay things, having all these experts and consultants get involved. Is it possible, Mr. Shields, for city staff just to take a quick look at it? In other words, internally, knowing that they're not experts in designing and engineering things. But, you know, all these BMPs and phosphorus and all these different things that we've looked at, for example, with the new Thackeray Center, we've really made a priority of trying to address some of these issues and get credits where we could. This is a pretty decent-sized chunk of land. Is it possible we can just sort of do an internal review that would not delay things?
We have, well, I said we haven't looked at it in detail. We have kind of looked at it notionally and spoken about it, myself and Jason Widstrom. It doesn't appear to be an obvious solution to us. We could invest more energy into it and do a more in-depth study, but it doesn't jump out like we saw at the Jesse Thackeray. It's a real obvious opportunity to solve a neighborhood problem because the distance from the problems that we have and the nature of the problems that we have in that area.
Is that for quantity or for quality?
Well, the real challenges we have over there have to do with inadequate localized drainage. So it's really a problem getting the water down to where it needs to go. We then have another struggle getting it underneath West Avenue, and the crossing over there is fairly far away from this park, so.
It's quantity then? In other words, you actually have surface flow or whatever?
Yeah, the problems that the neighborhoods, neighbors experience is a quantity issue in that poor localized drainage and high groundwater tables. So it doesn't seem to be an obvious solution to us. We have looked at it quickly.
I mean, I also have concerns about the skate park, being a former skateboarder many years ago. Let me ask, how does the city deal with liability? Are we self-insured? Or do we have a policy down in Richmond where the kid breaks his neck doing the skate park? What happens when we get sued for a couple million bucks? Who pays that bill?
We're insured by the Virginia Municipal League, and they are accustomed to insuring things like parks, basketball courts, tennis courts, skate parks. And so they understand that's the business that we're in and would cover us.
And so is our premium related to our population or is it related to, for example, the equipment we have? In other words, would our premium go up because we have a skate park from what we might pay ordinarily?
I'd have to get back with you on that question specifically. We don't, I don't recall, when we had the temporary skate park, whether we had an insurance implication of that or not. I don't recall that we did, but let me get a firmer response on that.
Okay, let me also.
One thing, I believe you're, the city has sovereign immunity up to only, they have sovereign immunity under the Virginia Code, state statute. And the only thing you're exposed for is the limits of liability insurance you have, that you have sovereign immunity above that level. I'm not your attorney. I only play one on TV.
Yeah, I hear you.
But I believe that's what's out there.
Okay. You're on the bike trail, which is great. Are there any special, you know, things you're doing to basically take advantage of the fact you're on the bike trail?
The entrance right now where the West End Park exists right now. Would you like to design that? Our, thank you, active part of West End Park that's been there for almost 30 years now was designed that way from that side to kind of junction. There's also an information gazebo thing there and a water thing and so forth, which you pass through to go into the park. So it has a rather broad face there off of the bike where you cross Grove. So it's kind of, people who bike and walk and run on Grove are very aware of that entrance into the park there. It was sort of Harry English's, I was on the committee with him back then to kind of make it be a face.
There, I guess, to me, I don't recall there really being bike racks there. I may be mistaken, but for example, is this going to include additional bike racks as part of this proposal?
There are bike racks included, and I don't know if there's anything more than bike racks to specify. bike racks to specific to draw in more of the bikers. But I believe the park itself, I hope, would do that and other amenities. But there are additional bike racks included in this right off the trail. And we do have some intricate details that actually were some of the issues we dealt with, with Virginia Dominion Power and some of the lines they run and things like that, that we have entered into some agreements as we cross over those places. But we could certainly look and see if there's something else that we can invite those folks that are right there already and see if there's something we can do.
I mean, I would encourage you to try to look at state-of-the-art bike amenities because this is right on the bike trail. It's a perfect opportunity to draw people into the city by bicycle versus cars. There's not much parking be provided, as best I can tell. And so, you know, the extent we're able to make this an attractive place for bikers, I would think that'd be a great idea. Is there any lighting provided at all with respect to this?
It will be like the rest of our parks. It closes at dark. There was certainly some discussion. I know that when we went through some of the reviews and the, in the public safety, talked about having the ability to have some lights that they can quickly see through. And I'm going to have to go back to our notes from that and determine where we ended up on that and whether we added lights to the project or.
It's most likely on the site plan, but I don't, I don't.
Yeah, it would, it would.
I couldn't really, oh, that site plan.
Full site plan, most likely, I'll head. Not that I can read it.
I mean, I guess I would say to the extent you do have lighting, which is nice, you have dark sky, dark sky lighting, which basically canisters down to avoid light pollution to your neighbors.
I don't think we added any lights in there. If I remember correctly, we ended up not adding any, any lighting to the, to the actual existing park, if I remember correctly.
Okay. And can the skate park area be repurposed? For example, when I was a kid, skateboarding was really hot. And then 10 years later, it was dead. And now it's hot and then it's dead. It seems like it goes through these areas where it kind of comes and goes. Is it possible to repurpose that area? Is it really something where you got a concrete thing poured into a slab where there's really, it's it. You can't change it around. You don't have much flexibility with it.
Yeah, well, certainly the intention right now is for it to be skateboard features and we can certainly look into the possibility of whether bikes could use that. And I remember that question coming up. But repurposing, I guess, would mean we'd pull some of that stuff out of there at some point. And absolutely, if we found the newest, you know, thing and we're able to incorporate that in there. I do know that we have a group of folks that annually still come to us about the skate features. We have people from, from back in the early discussions that come to us and say, have you ever gotten there yet? Have we ever, you know, I don't even live here anymore, as Charlie said, you know, they're beyond the skateboard years, but they're still here. And I, and I didn't look up all the stuff and I, and I appreciate the, the information. But I'm, I'm confident and we do have some notes and I, and I put a call into Steve Row, the old school resource officer who had a group of folks got together and had some, had some, some details on still their desires on the skateboard feature stuff. And it's still there. We'll have to pull that out as well.
Okay. And then finally, I guess I would just encourage you to talk to your immediate neighbors, your residential neighbors, and make sure they're up to speed on what you're going to do. Maybe someone new has moved in. It's a pretty big deal making, you know, for example, the skateboard park could be noisy even though some distance to it. There's things clanking down when you, you know, you go off or whatever. And so I would suggest maybe reaching out to each of them, not just sort of through a public meeting, but actually in some way reaching out to them, letting them know what you're planning on doing and make sure that they don't have major issues that may be appropriate for us to take up as well. Ms. Oliver, yes, and then we'll wrap it up.
If I could just add on to your question about the bike parking, is there any shelter in this plan? Any way to get out of the sun or the rain? Let's say you're biking through and it's a hot day and you want to take a break or the trees. But I mean, is there, what about if it's raining?
Currently, no proposed shelters of any kind in the, in the plans.
Okay, any other comments? If not, why don't we wind this down? We certainly appreciate all of your time and effort and to the city and to the committee and commission. And thank you, Danny, as well for shepherding this through. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields, what's the next item?
Next item is, is just a brief discussion of a big topic, and that is to provide counsel just with a roadmap of the upcoming decision points and process for the City Hall renovation and expansion project. And we've prepared a memo for the council in your packet. And we wanted to speak to that very briefly. I'll ask Cindy to do that and provide an update on the project. The more substantive discussion is scheduled for two weeks from tonight on the 21st, where we'll have architects in a more, a deeper discussion. This is really just a roadmap of the decision-making process. And one other request is Judge McHugh, is the chief judge with Arlington County, would like to come and speak to the council and close session about security issues. And we would request to be, for that to be added as your agenda next week on the 14th, which is your regular session. But just to have a brief time with him for that discussion as well as part of that roadmap. Cindy?
Thank you, Wyand councils. This is just to give a high-level update on where some of the projects are on the timeline, because we will do a deeper dive on the 21st, sort of take what you saw in February. We've done some more design work and update and give you a more granular review of options and timelines. So on the page one of the memo, it just gives you a project status on where we are with the design work, but also the critical renovations that council has authorized. And then on the second page of the memo gives you an outline from where we have been from February to June, reminding council that the first feasibility study was in FY '07. And then in FY '12, '13, and '14, you've appropriated in the CIP the funding for this project. And you have issued bonds for $4 million on this project. So this timeline only picks up from the beginning of 2014. There's been seven years of work prior to that. So it'll pick up with what we've done this year and then where we're planning to do the briefing on the 14th and the 21st. The 14th being the one with Judge Wyatt mentioned because he's unavailable for the 21st. And then from that briefing and the 21st briefing with you all, we would then be prepared based on the approved trajectory to go into 60% floor plans and exterior renderings, then into stakeholder input on the architectural and the designs. And then, as you can see, move through the next normal engineering, design, contracting, bid-doc process with a target date of construction beginning in 2017 and a two-year process to do that. But the 21st would be the time that we would sit down with you, show you the floor plans, the, the addressing of the goals for the ADA, the security, the public safety for front, rear, parking, and the renovations in this building. So that's a high level of warming you up for what the 21st would be.
Thank you very much, Ms. Master. Any comments, Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. I think the issue is much more complicated than is implied by this. While I support the briefing on the 21st, I won't be here. I'll be out of it, out of the city. I agree that council needs to be briefed on the current proposal. But in the meantime, the library has a project which they're interested in having us focus on, which changes, it seems to me, the parking question. Can we do a unified parking for those two facilities? It seems to me we need to delve back into what functions we want performed here. Do we want to try to perform all of the functions here? Would we want to, for example, move some of the city functions into a new development, for example? July 21 begins to look like, well, here's what we're going to do and we're going to brief you on the details to do it. And I think this is our last real opportunity to take a big look at this project, to make sure that it's the most cost-effective project that we can do in the context now of the library needs and a library project. That would be one element. Another element is, what is the most cost-effective way to perform these various functions? We have a police function in this building. We have a courts function. We have a city council and meeting function and we have an office function. Is there a more intelligent, more cost-effective way to deal with these functions than to continue to maintain them in this building and do this? And keep in mind that this proposal includes tearing up the area in front of City Hall, jeopardizing the farmer's market. So to me, the July 21 is the kickoff of a discussion which ought to continue for at least a couple of weeks so that we can revalidate that this is what we want to do and this is the general project that we want to do. That's my suggestion.
Well, I'm cognizant of what you've just said. And I guess with that, I wonder if you'd better if we put it off for two weeks, that discussion, so that you're able to participate.
I think the discussion should occur, but the nature of the discussion, it seems to me that this is a way too limited discussion at this point. This is our last opportunity to re, to re-familiarize frankly, new council members that have come on, that this is the most cost-effective way to perform the functions that are being performed here, considering the collateral damage that may occur to the farmer's market and other things like that. And a lot of this assumes a certain amount of parking here. Do we need all this parking here, particularly in view of the fact that there are parking demands in the library? So how are we going to address that? So these are questions which I think are worthwhile asking. And I don't see how we do that in one night.
I agree. I agree.
I appreciate those. And Mayor, I would note that those are valid questions and I appreciate the heads up. We are intending to revisit some of the tear-down rebuild combination cost benefits. We do have a new parking plan that we'll be able to share with you. We don't have all the pictures yet, but we do have a proposal that we could pick up, potentially up to 40 spots that would address the library issue. So there are a lot of points that you just made, Vice Mayor Snare, that we were going to use the 21st to bring to fruition. The new parking plan also would eliminate an impact on the farmer's market in the post-construction phase. Obviously during the construction, we'd have an impact. But I appreciate the heads up on those points.
Well, maybe the 21st is a reintroduction to the subject matter, which I think is, it's been a while since the full council took up. And we do have some new members as well. So maybe we'll view that, the 21st as an opportunity basically to, to reintroduce the subject with the idea that we're not going to, it's not going to get solved then. It's not going to, you know, get through the whole, the whole situation. So that would be my suggestion, maybe. Comments? Additional comments?
So then you're saying item three, instead of reading July to February, would read something like September to February?
Let me just look at that line. Which one? Are you looking at number one or number two?
Page two, roadmap, item number three, I believe.
Yeah, the item number three on the second page.
But that's two, that's 2015, not 14.
Is July 2014 to February 2015.
Which one, number three?
Number two.
Starts now and goes to February.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that's not.
Which, that's, that's when I'm looking at, number three.
Yeah, but July is July 2014.
Yeah, but number three is that one?
Yeah.
It's 2015.
But July is now.
I know, but is it July this year or July of next year?
It's intended to be July 2014 to February 2015.
I'm sorry. Okay. I was reading it differently. Then I think it would push off.
Clarify the year.
I think it definitely would push off.
I guess to, to what I'm hearing from people, it suggests that that next item would not start before September.
It's likely, highly likely.
I approve of the direction in which you're going and just wanted to say that. I'm going to make every effort to be here on the 21st. I will be coming back from out of town and at the mercy of airplane schedules. So I do have a certain anxiety about missing the fun if all these things were to be considered that night. So if, we will have a bit more time. I know that tons of work has been done over tens of years on this. But in particular, if we are going to kind of reintroduce ourselves to the topic, I would like us to spend more time on the bullet point that brings us the information from Duberry's analysis of the tear-down, build-new, new public library combination, some of the things that Vice Mayor Snyder was talking about. And that's an area that, you know, we've dealt glancing attention to before, but not really had a serious discussion about, certainly not with the current council. And, you know, the timeline itself, as it lays out, is sort of anchored in the assumption that we're not going to do that. And one thing I would like to see in addition to, you know, cost information and all the other stuff related to that option is a timetable option too, a timetable information too. So if on the 21st, we could devote some serious attention to that part of it, then at the next meeting, we consider it, we could go back to the other option. Then we both would have been given something like equal fair time, I think. And that's what I would suggest.
Okay. Other comments or should we move on to council comments? Anything else? Okay, why don't we go on?
And financial, and sorry, and financial aspects thereon too, you know, the full financial information on the other option.
So remember, we do have a closed session at the end of this meeting. So why don't we go on to council comments and then we'll go on to our closed session. Are there any comments from members of council? Mr. Burke?
Just a reminder to EDC members, we're going to be meeting on the 14th. Two agenda items. One is discuss standard proffer packets. Why, if it's possible, to get any paper that staff has been putting together before that so we can, given that we only have an hour.
Yeah, we will do that.
Out, rather than a table drop, maybe even a day before to talk about that. And the second is to take up the West Broad project, revisit, figure out where we're at. I'm going to suggest that we not invite the developer to the meeting, but just have an opportunity to talk to staff. I think there were some get-backs as far as budgetary numbers and fiscal impact numbers go. Just get our heads around it and then do comments back through Wyatt once we have a sense of council or sense of the EDC where, where people are at. And then go from there. And I'm going to recommend that we not schedule that yet until the EDC meets. That would be my suggestion. And then two, to preview other work that I'm hoping that the EDC takes on. I think the two big lifts are going to be, or three big projects, is the standard proffer packages, packets. Two is looking at our commercial zoning districts and figuring out what usage we want to have and don't want to have there. Before we get too far ahead, I think it would be good to have the interim city attorney involved in that, just so we can get guidance on, on what we can and can exclude. So we just have a verbal primer before we get too far ahead. And then three big item that I think the EDC should take on is looking at a little bit of visioning on the types of development usage that we're going to want to see in the city. Given that we are seeing interest in the city, what sort of anchors do we want to have? Certainly the movie theater is one. And there may be others that we want to see, such as other recreational venues and other things of that nature, just so we can begin to have that, that discussion. And I think we can formulate some of that discussion based on some, some studies that have been done by staff and others. So that's what I'm proposing. And I just wanted, the reason why I wanted to do it here is just make sure that the full council knew what we were, you know, what I was recommending that we take on. I think those are sort of the, the big picture items, other than the day-to-day kind of development projects that we're going to be taking up as well. So those are my thoughts. If anybody's got any objections with that course, just let me know. And of course, we would check in with the entire council as things, things progress. But.
Mr. Duncan?
Just a couple of questions related to that. So the EDC meeting will be at 6:30 on July 14th. Is that the plan?
That's right.
Okay. Do you think that you would plan another meeting to discuss those other topics you were talking about two weeks after that? Or we're heading into recess time, so I'm just trying to figure out. So July 28th then would be the next opportunity for EDC to get together.
The EDC's normal cycle is on work sessions and, and we did, tonight, we had, we had a number of members who had conflicts and so we didn't have an EDC meeting tonight.
I think it was a lot easier for staff to keep it to a work session.
Okay, so then you're talking August 4th then?
That would probably be the next target time if, just to keep to that schedule.
And that's our last work session, obviously for August, because we only have one of each in August. Okay. Has the Shreve Corner Plan that we would discuss next Monday at the EDC been resubmitted?
They are in the process of resubmitting. They are in the process of resubmitting along the lines that, that I've communicated out to council. And so I expect by the, by the 14th, we would have some additional information and some additional analysis that we could share.
Okay, so there'll be new information for us to consider there. Okay. All right, that was all on that. Thank you. In the same vein, the Budget Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for July 22nd. That's a Tuesday at 7:30. Mr. Lecandre, remind me if I forget anything here, but there's been a discussion that the items would include the preview of the year-end report, the dashboard topic, Dan's deck, call it what you will, a review of discussions, information based on discussions that Mr. Lecandre's had, Mr. Snyder, about new revenue, potential of planning opportunity areas and their potential to help us close a gap, which has been identified between what we want and what we are currently collecting. And then finally, some discussion of the water sale proceeds, which I see as a topic for the full council, but pension option, endowment fund option, land banking option, investment in stormwater, sanitary sewer, sewer option, or just direct investment in facilities option. Anyway, those are the four large topics that we can touch on at that July 22nd Budget Finance Committee meeting. Any questions about that? I'm happy to take them, but the only other thing is congratulations to Mr. Tartar for being a TV star.
Well done.
Very nicely done. If you haven't had a chance to, if you didn't get up at 5:00 in the morning, which I didn't, it's online, thanks to the city's communication staff, which is linked to the four television station interviews, features, two of which included interviews. The fireworks process this time, since it's fresh in our minds, seemed like a good opportunity to make use of our Twitter feed to inform the waiting masses. That was actually how I finally found out after exchanging emails with you. Somebody, you know, back behind me said that city's Twitter feed says they're going to go off in two minutes. And sure enough, that was exactly correct, which was about the same time I got your email. Anyway, just to make, you have heard people say afterwards that, wow, what was going on? We didn't know. We had young kids, you know, the wind was blowing. You know, just to educate people that, you know what, we're going to give you updates, you know, as the evening wears on, and, and try to help families particularly plan and anticipate if there's any likelihood of a delay or a rain situation or a weather situation.
Well, that would have been much preferable, and, and I will just state that we weren't being given good information ourselves. I mean, the shooter that we had when the question was put to him, so we could, if it was going to be a half an hour, we really wanted to know that, and the shooter was saying it's going to be five minutes. And then five minutes. And so that is what we were struggling with there.
I had heard reports of Wyatt was ready to just throw himself on the button.
And once it got started, wow, I think maybe they could have speeded it up a little bit. A certain member of council sent me a note, like, this is going on forever. Even my son, who's 21, said, "Wow, it's really late, Dad. It's like 5:11." Anyway, it was beautiful weather, and it was a great show, but making use of the Twitter feed to keep people informed. If, if we have the information to give them would be a great idea.
Just an idea as well, I'm just throwing this out, and it's not meant to be a big discussion point. I have mentioned to you Wyatt as well. But I think it would be nice if we could find a way to, to kind of keep people in the city all day, not just for fireworks at the end and the readings, which Dave Snyder led earlier in the day, which was great, but something in between those two events. Maybe some music in the park or something like that. Nothing really heavy-duty, like competing with the Memorial Day Parade, but just some activity for families and folks in the city to do during the day, I think would be something worthy of at least consideration for future years. So maybe I'll just leave it at that, but I, I did kind of feel like there's a hole in the middle of the day that probably could-
I did hear one call for an extra ice cream truck. Wow, I didn't even get close enough, but apparently the ice cream truck lines were legendary.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, two trucks, maybe? I don't, I don't think there's a non-compete clause, is there? I mean, can we get a couple so that people don't have to wait so long in line? Well, whatever. Anyway, it's a, it's a vending opportunity as well.
Absolutely. Ms. Connolly's been patient tonight.
Finally, Ms. Connolly hasn't spoken all night tonight, but my question is just about the stabbing across the street. I know that was in Fairfax County. Do we have any other information, or is it?
The, we do not have anyone in custody. We don't know any further than what was announced at the time. The victim, I believe, is in stable condition. At first, it was a, a, a critical situation. And, but if we do get more information, we will, we'll get that out. A very unfortunate event, yeah.
Why don't we take a five-minute break and then go to a closed session? Can we do it here?
Okay.
All right, five minutes, we'll come back, and we'll try to wrap this up.
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes.
The steering committee for the George Mason High School campus study in economic development area, we don't have appointments to that group. And so, we've, we've chartered the group, but we have, the council has not formally appointed the, the two council reps to it. And so, I'll just note that, and if, perhaps there could be discussion and have that action scheduled for the 14th, if possible.
Okay, thank you. Five minutes, we'll come back and wrap it up.
I suggest, before you take the break, you do the motion during your five-minute break. I can have the TV camera break down. Do your motion going in, and we'll have, save the five minutes.
No, I think this is just the motion, and then we'll take a five-minute break after we go into closed session. That's fine. Upon a motion made by council member-
Duncan.
And seconded by council member-
Connolly.
And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in a meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body TJ Expansion of Roberts Park. In pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion of prospective candidates for employment of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, city attorney recruitment. Councilmember Buruk?
Yes.
Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Zee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tartar, yes. Okay, we're in closed session. Let's take a five-minute break.